All right. Good evening. Calling to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board for a month. Sorry, Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. As a preliminary matter, this is John Heard, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Joseph Carroll?
Yes.
Steve DeCoursey?
Yes.
And Len Diggins?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdeline?
Yes.
Douglas Heim?
Yes, good evening.
And Board Administrator Ashley Maher is participating remotely. Good evening. This open meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the novel coronavirus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus and reduce risk of COVID-19 illness, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you could find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Even if members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by Zoom as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please also take care to adjust your screen or device name if you would like to speak. In order for us to recognize speakers appropriately and develop accurate minutes, it is helpful for participants to see your full first and last name when calling upon you rather than a nickname. All of the meeting materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the Novus Agenda Dashboard. We recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on Novus unless the chair notes otherwise. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. This meeting will feature public opportunities for public comment on certain agenda items. After members have spoken, I, as the chair, will afford the public comment opportunities as follows. I'll first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please keep in mind that all participants and members of the public must be recognized by the chair before speaking. Finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call vote. All right, and that brings us to our consent agenda. We have one item, request for a contracted drain layer license. Green Site Services Group, Inc., 24 William Way, Bellingham, Massachusetts. Mr. Carroll?
I move approval subject to all conditions as set forth.
Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey.
Second.
Any further comments or questions, Mr. Diggins?
No, thank you.
Any comments or questions, Mrs. Mahan?
No, thank you.
All right, Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Curro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Ms. Nanceville?
And that takes us to traffic rules and ordering of the business.
Why am I on?
You want to go in the other room?
For discussion and vote authorization for remote special town meeting, November 16th, 2020. We have our moderator, John Leoni, with us now. Attorney Heim?
Hello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The long and short of it is, is that the special act that allows us to proceed by remote participation requires a select board vote to affirm the moderator's recommendation that we proceed in such a manner after he has affirmed that the technology platform adequately performs all the functions that we would need for a remotely conducted town meeting. So with that, I guess I turn it over to the moderator with your discretion, Mr. Heard.
Yes, Mr. Leoni?
Good evening. You've all received my letter of October 27th requesting that the board approve a virtual town meeting. We are going to be using a hybrid Zoom and dedicated software platform, the Arlington Virtual Town Meeting Platform, which we've I think we leased or bought a license from Mr. Joe Plato of Z Plato Research. Joe is a selectman in the town of Lexington. He wrote the software that we're using. I've been working closely with the Select Board member Len Diggins on this project. Len's been very helpful and sort of leading the charge. We've trained up almost all the town meeting members. We've had, this is our fifth night of training. We have one more after this. They'll all be trained, and then we're going to be running a virtual dress rehearsal on the 10th. I have been in contact with the Disability Commission, and they are, believe, on Thursday are going to be part of the training to analyze it to make sure it meets with all the ADA requirements, which I'm pretty sure it will because the same platform was in use by Lexington. And frankly, I know Mr. Carroll has been on, but I think we have to get the rest of you, Mr. Heard, Mr. Heim, Chapdeline, Diane, Stuart, and Steve. I don't know if you're town meeting member. Yeah, you all have to sign up for training tomorrow night or the staff training, which we're going to do next Monday at 3:00 PM. But we need you all to sign up to be trained too. We've put a lot of hours into this, a lot of effort, and I think it's going to work pretty well. I know that today you received a letter from a town meeting member, Patricia Warden. The letter is quite well, Pat doesn't like the idea, to say the least, but I think her fears are overblown and we'll have her trained as well. She's been on twice, and we'll get her on another time if necessary. I have sent out revised rules that picked up on some of the things that she picked up on that are changing it. So we're back to, I think, a good place. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Great, thank you. I will turn to the board for any questions, comments, or motions. Mrs. Mahan?
I thank you, Attorney Heim and Attorney Leoni, Moderator Leoni. I am scheduled for tomorrow night.
Oh, good.
Mr. Diggins, Len, Precinct 14, I believe, meeting is tomorrow night. I'd like to move approval.
All right, and Mr. Diggins?
Is it really appropriate for you to second? Of course I second.
All right, any, Attorney Heim?
Mr. Chair, there's a specific language for the approval regarding both a notice that needs to be sent out as well as just to have something recorded for the town clerk. If I might prevail upon Ms. Mahan or Mrs. Mahan or another board member to read the motion that was transmitted to the board.
Sorry, I've been making sure that I keep myself on mute so much that I didn't have it on. Okay, I will read it. Oh, we're gonna find it. Sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
No worries. I'd like to make the following motion that the town of Arlington Select Board moves as follows. First pursuant to Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, and having received a written request of the town moderator, John D. Leoni Esquire dated October 22nd, 2020, that the November 16th, 2020 special town meeting be conducted remotely via the Zoom telephone and video conferencing platform, combined with the Z Pato Research Technology as recommended by the moderator. And can I do this, Attorney Heim, all in one motion? Okay, and second that a notice consistent with the second that a notice consistent with the foregoing for a remote special town meeting in November 16th, 2020 at 8 o'clock PM be issued in compliance with Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020 and Chapter 39, Section 10A.
Mr. Diggins, just to confirm?
Yes.
Your second?
For a second.
Mr. Carroll? Any comments or questions?
No, I just want to say thank you very much. I understand that some folks are technophobic, for lack of a better word, but you know, I appreciate the countless hours that have gone into setting this up between the moderator and Mr. Diggins and Mr. Hellmuth, and I know there are a number of town staff who've been involved as well. I appreciated the training. I think that those who haven't had it will find it very beneficial and, you know, this is incredibly important for us in case we're you know, still in this place when the annual town meeting comes around. So we've made a lot of big changes before. We went to electronic voting in the in-person town meeting, and I think that town meeting will rise to the challenge on this too. So thank you for all of your efforts.
All right, Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first of all, I do want to say I did attend the training on October 27th with my colleagues from Precinct 2. And I want to thank Mr. Diggins, Mr. Leoni, just as Mr. Curro said, and town staff. I know there was a lot of time put into it, and I didn't see Mr. Diggins patting himself on the back. He's been working very hard on this throughout the whole timeframe, and we really appreciate the work that he's done, that Mr. Hellmuth has done, and Mr. Moderator, you're very, Mr. Leoni, you're very patient that evening with the various questions that came in. So I think if people continue to use the training and use the virtual training coming up next week or the dry run, you will get through this, and it's not ideal, but it's the world that we live in now. So thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
And I also just want to thank everyone that I know there's been a lot of work on this behind the scenes, and you don't always get credit for all the work you're doing in such manners, but I know a lot of people have been really working hard. And I anticipate this will be a lot smoother than people fear. I think sometimes when something's new, you get it in your head, it's going to be worse than it actually is, and I think this will go smoothly. And it's something that has to happen because we, you know, we pushed off the articles from the spring. It's now time to follow through on our promise to the proponents at that time. And, you know, I'm looking forward to it. Mr. Diggins, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate everyone's gratitude, but the staff, and you mentioned this, Mr. Heard, just now, is that there are a lot of people behind the scenes, you know, and the staff mean are really, you know, this happened because you only go so far with a couple of us, you know, and there's a lot that really goes on, you know, to pull this off, and they are putting in a lot of hours, and they're just great people to work with too. So I've gotten to know them better and just really appreciate what great people we have working with the town for the town. So that's it. Thank you.
Great. So Attorney Heim, we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Curro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Ms. Nanceville?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you all. I thank you all. I do want to thank all the staff. There's about eight to 10 of them, between Adam and Julie and everyone else down the line. Dennis Lowry has been a great technical help. They all deserve a big round of applause and some sort of thanks from the town. Okay, thank you.
All right. That brings us on to warrant article hearings. We have two articles to be heard tonight. Article 8, Acceptance of Legislation by Law Amendment Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund, tabled from the October 19th to 2020 meeting. And Article 25, Resolution Black Lives Matter Banner at Town Hall, also tabled from October 19th, 2020. So we will first take on Article 8. And Mr. Chapdeline, do we have the article proponents with us?
Yes, let me promote them right now. Jenny, I promoted you and Karen Kelleher. Is there anybody else I should promote to speak to the article?
I'm not certain if Aaron Swarko is on yet.
No, I don't see her yet. No.
Okay. Then I am not certain if anybody else is attending.
All right.
Okay.
All right, we have Mrs. Keller and our Director of Planning, Jenny Rate. Jenny, do you want to jump off of it?
Certainly. I'm Jenny Rate. I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development. Thank you for letting me speak about this article. I think as everybody here knows, we need as many tools as we possibly can get to create and preserve affordable housing. We already have, you know, sort of a fantastic number of tools that we use and resources in Arlington, but there's never any doubt that we could always use more. And the trust fund is actually something that we've talked about both at our joint board meetings as well as a strategy that we have in our housing production plan, which was adopted in 2016. It's a public body with a lot of potential. And I'll kind of tell you a little bit about what I think could happen with a trust and how it can be helpful. So you know, there's a number of possible uses for a trust fund, but the most important thing for you to understand is that there's there's actually 115 of these trusts that operate in the Commonwealth. Many of them operate in communities that have Community Preservation Act funds, just like Arlington. Actually, 90% of them have CPA funds, a CPA, you know, resource that then is channeled into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for a variety of uses, predominantly, of course, to create and preserve affordable housing in accordance with some type of plan. We are one of those communities that has a housing production plan, but there are other types of plans that are followed, and in fact, there would be an annual action plan that this trust would ultimately have to follow and work in accordance with. So so there are a number of trusts. There are 70, 90% of them are municipal affordable housing trusts as well, which means that they were adopted after 2005, which was basically the timing when the state legislature allowed municipalities to create municipal affordable housing trust funds. Prior to that, you had to go through a home rule petition process, which was, you know, very burdensome and onerous. However, 11 communities did it. So it's not impossible, but it's certainly not a simple, a simple way to streamline the process and create these types of funding resources. So, you know, it's really, it's something that's meant to create, you know, streamlined process for affordable housing and allow the town to act more quickly and nimbly when it comes to affordable housing opportunities, which do occur throughout the course of any particular calendar year. As I said, we have a lot of tools in our tool box. One of them, of course, is we have a very active and engaged community development corporation, which is the Housing Corporation of Arlington. We have other bodies in town that either preserve affordable housing or have the option of creating it, like our housing authority. And there are other opportunities as well to work with other housing organizations. And so we want to be able to work with all of them. The Housing Plan Implementation Committee is really the body that has put this forward, as stated in the warrant article. And the reason for that is because it's coming from the housing production plan, but it's also because we've identified a number of areas of opportunity where we want to be able to work, and we see the trust as being an excellent resource to do that. So advancing goals such as preserving affordability at places where there's currently market rate affordable housing. So the property might seem to be affordable, but it doesn't actually have any sort of deed restriction. So that might be a source, a resource for, you know, one way to utilize this resource. Other things include rehabilitating housing, first-time home buyer opportunities. There's a lot of things that could happen over the course of any, any point during a year that could be possible. We envision that the trust would be, in terms of administratively speaking, the trust would have staff from my department who would be helping with the trust, and until such time that it is self-sustaining, which I think in the warrant article suggests, 2023, it would be something that is, you know, included as part of our current staff operation. But then at that point in time, we would have a cash offset that comes directly from the trust to fund my staff person's time in excess of, you know, their typical duties, working with the trust to fund back the department's time that it's spent on the trust. So I see this as being good in terms of both long-term operationally, so that's self-sustaining, but also so that it's actually able to meet its goals. One of the things that I pointed out in my memo is that perhaps in the long term, you know, we would need an actual staff person, that staff person working full-time, which seems unusual, but, you know, again, in a in the future, could be funded full-time from the trust. So it's not meant to be a burden on the town. We're not seeking an appropriation at this time from any funding source. We're just seeking to establish the trust. And so that speaks to then, what do we do after we adopt the trust if we do? Well, we have to do a few different things. The first thing that we have to do is we need to figure out who the trustees are. And so in the trust bylaw, we've identified a number of different types of members. We've had a lot of discussions about this. I think they've been really fruitful. And also identify and sort of continue opportunities for us to be working together with our different housing organizations. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity, but we need to name the body, get them together to meet, to create a declaration of trust, to do the rules and regulations, and also then to look at the annual action plan. The housing production plan is a five-year plan that actually expires next year, and so we will be going through a process over the course, starting in early January, to be updating that housing production plan, and that, I think, will actually set us on a course for having even clearer intentions for using these funds in the future. So the last thing I'll say is that there's actually of our 10 or so communities that we often compare ourselves with. Seven of them actually have affordable housing trust funds, and they operate quite successfully in those communities, including Belmont, Redding, Winchester, Brookline, Melrose, Milton, and North Andover. And so we really, you know, I think Arlington to join in that crowd is, is one thing, but the other thing that I think that could be excellent for Arlington is to leverage all the existing capacity that we already have to make our work even better in the future. So I'm looking forward to hearing any questions from the board and also appreciate very much the work of some of the members on this board, as well as the town manager and town council, the Housing Plan Implementation Committee, and also the Finance Committee and all of their input in helping to pull this together. We've had a lot of interesting conversations as well as some feedback along the way from people participating in the public meetings. So, thank you.
That's why I don't mute myself. Ms. Kelleher, do you have anything to add?
Jenny's covered a lot, but I'll just add a few things if very quick. We've had a lot of community conversation in about the last year, year and a half, about the need for affordable housing in Arlington, and it's very gratifying to hear that conversation. It's certainly clear that we have differences of opinion amongst us about what's the best way to create more affordable housing. And I apologize, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Karen Kelleher. I'm a town meeting member, and I'm also a member of the Housing Plan Implementation Committee. And my background is in developing and financing affordable housing. So I think that conversation is really healthy, and we disagree about a lot, but I hear almost unanimous agreement that housing affordability is a crisis in Arlington for existing residents. It is a concern about our diversity and our both our ability to maintain our existing diversity and restore diversity we may have had in the past. The housing market is changing around us, and that is changing the demographics of our community. If we don't act proactively, those trends will continue. So I hope that you'll act favorably to give us this tool or support the creation of this flexible tool, which will allow us to have all those conversations about what the strategies are that we should follow in the future, but this tool is flexible. We will need to fund it. Affordable housing is fundamentally a math problem that doesn't work. And this article will create the vehicle. It will not fund it. There was an additional article that was put forth in this last fall by the Housing Plan Implementation Committee that I hope we will be coming back to next time we, in the spring, per town meeting, which would provide some funding where it approved in a real estate transfer fee. And there are lots of, you may have lots of questions about funding sources that I'm sure Jenny can answer. But if the town wishes to move proactively in this direction, we will need to plan to have conversations about how we're going to leverage funding. Thank you very much.
Mr. Carroll?
Thank you very much. I mean, I'm not going to offer a motion yet because I know that we have public comment, but to me, this is a no-brainer to adopt this. I think having this flexible tool available is incredibly important. I think it builds on the previous work of this board and of so many others in Arlington with the Community Preservation Act. I think the you know, I think we saw this past year that we didn't have housing projects come forward on CPA applications and having this, this tool available, I think, will allow us to continue pushing that work forward. I did have some communication through the manager with Ms. Rate. I had a question because we had received some community input that we should be somehow constraining this recommended vote and this home rule petition, or this acceptance, rather, in a way that would restrict the use of funds to lower tiers, lower AMIs. But my understanding, and I want to just confirm that my understanding is correct, is that those, those types of strategies are most appropriately handled in the action plan that the trustees will be putting together. Could I confirm that through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, that would be the case during the time that we're, you know, after the trustees are named and when they start to have discussions about the annual action plan. That's the best time to think about the types of strategies and income tiers.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And also, when I was going through the material and the memo from Department of Planning, Community Development, I noticed that there are kind of two stances that trustees take either as a funding entity or as an initiator of projects. Does the language here provide the trust with the ability to act in either role or either capacity? Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes, it does. It has that level of flexibility.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the work of your department, of the Housing Production Implementation Committee on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this presentation. Mr. Curro already asked my trustee question, so I'm gonna jump over that. Just not so much, the first one is something that I've raised in CDBJ, and we've discussed this community development block grant. I definitely think this is a great idea, especially to try to help various individuals achieve housing stability. And I understand from the memorandum that we received that that is right now being talked about geared towards low to moderate income individuals, and my only thing would be not adopting the stance that I have, and the committee has subsequently voted in CDBG that we limit it just to low. I understand here the flexibility of low to moderate. I just would ask either through Ms. Rate or Ms. Kelleher that when this committee is comprised I just would ask either through Ms. Ray or Ms. Kelleher that when this committee is comprised, that my fear is coming from my family background of how I grew up in Arlington and if I was growing up at this time in Arlington, we would not have internet and wifi and laptops. And when you offer programs like this, and this was my concern with CDBG, and we did change it to just low income, which, which comes with it, the understanding that there's some extra work that needs to be done, outreach, not only individuals, but through groups. So I just wanted to put it on there that when the committee does meet, I'm, I'm okay with low to moderate. But my fear, if it's just supposed to be on a website in a virtual, and I'm not saying this in a negative way, but you know, virtual Zoom meeting, unless on a very rare occasion, you're not going to reach low income households. So I, I just would put the ask out there that I'm okay with low to moderate. If you all can have that discussion and sort of have two strategies and as well as if there should be any kind of ranking in terms of if you do get low and moderate income applications. My first pass would be try to feed, fill the greatest need first, which is low, but also other factors can, can play into that. I, I don't know if anyone wants to comment on that. It's okay if you don't.
Cool. That sounds completely reasonable. Yeah, that, that sounds reasonable. I appreciate that, Diane, and have recall, of course, our conversations related to the CDBG subcommittee and your recommendations that we acted upon. So we will definitely consider that as the trustees are named and the trust is formed. Thank you.
And then my second question would be, and I don't know, again, if it's a question that could be answered at this time, is I understand that you're going to be identifying mechanisms for this program to be successful for affordable housing in addressing not just income issues, but race and equity goals that the town of Arlington, we've committed ourselves to over the past many years. I'm just wondering, and I don't know if this plays back into the joint meeting with the ARB, the redevelopment board and select board. I see not only identifying funding and identifying low to moderate income, income individuals, but also identifying opportunities. This is where my request at the joint meeting between the two boards for the 3D schematic plans that the town could possibly, I was hoping through the planning board, that that would come to fruition. I don't know if it's applicable here. So my question is, am I correct to assume that among the first two points, the third point of actually identifying actual properties, areas, opportunities will be the charge of this committee? Or will that just still be out of the planning department? And what tools will be utilized that we have, or we could get it in the future to start to build that way?
These are all really interesting in terms of thinking about how it relates to that, the, the map that you were talking about, or the sort of the 3D map that we were talking about doing, and we still will create once we can move that forward in the next year. But I think that the, the plan is the housing production plan. So that, that's our primary planning document. There would be an annual action plan for the trustees to determine what they can actually achieve over the course of one year. And that might include discussions about specific properties. It might, it might be other types of opportunities that would have to be, you know, a discussion that happens when the trustees are actually named and formed. And I think that there could be input from lots of different sources, including the redevelopment board, including this body. You know, many, many other entities might have opinions about where the trust should be looking to create or preserve affordable housing. And I think we would look to all of those individuals and bodies, official or unofficial, to help us to figure that out on an annual basis. And to your other point, I think we'd want to do it in a way that's not just in this virtual format, but is finding a way to reach out to as many people as possible. And hopefully, over the course of next year, we're not only operating in this format anyway, but you know, I think that we want to have as much input as possible, the same way that, you know, we did when we tried, when we created the housing production plan. We'll go through a similar process again to get input about, about the opportunities that we're talking about. That said, the, the point of the trust is also to be able to act upon new opportunities that may not have been known at the time of, you know, the creation of the annual action plan. So they'll still have that flexibility to, to identify a new opportunity and may wish to pursue it. Depending upon the scale of that opportunity and how they need to achieve it, they would come back to the select board to talk about it before pursuing it any further. So there will be another sort of safeguard checkpoint in time where we would come back and have a discussion about that and, and, you know, determine whether or not it makes sense to pursue it further. So I, I'm not trying to answer all of your questions, but I think I might have touched on some of them, hopefully.
Yes, you did. And I look forward to, thank you, Mr. Chair. No further questions.
All right. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, so I, of course, support this. I have been attending a lot of the HP IC meetings in hopes that I will prove myself worthy of being made a liaison to the community on behalf of the select board. And, uh, and they're doing really good work and, and, and I have to say, in doing some research for, for the Rainbow Commission, I went to the websites of all the, all the towns, excuse me, municipalities of Massachusetts and saw quite a few of these trust funds in, and, and you mentioned that also that there are a lot of them. And it's my question is, is because I, since I didn't do any research on them themselves, is any indication of, of how successful they've been in our, or what maybe strategies that they have that have led to levels of success? I think I might be making a research project for myself, but I just figured I'd ask you first.
Mr. Ray?
I was gonna say, actually Karen might have a lot more examples, partially because of her full time work, but also because of our conversations with the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. So if it's okay, if I can defer to Karen.
Thank you. I'll do my best. I, I just happened to, in, you know, sort of working through this article, go through the Mass Housing Partnership Guidebook and read some, just sort of what are some of the examples out there? And some trusts might have raised $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 and driven a smaller amount of production or preservation of affordable housing, but others have raised millions of dollars and used those dollars to leverage state subsidies and federal subsidies to drive thousands of units over time in their communities. So there's a very wide range of outcomes, Mr. Diggins, and different types of programs. And so we could certainly put together, and I expect we will, for the public presentations and the work of building an action plan. The trustees that are involved in that could absolutely be equipped with just some profiles of how communities have used their trust and what they've accomplished with it and what kind of resources were necessary to make that happen.
But they're moving the needle, right? I mean, they are really having impact, right?
Many of them are moving the needle very materially. And I think if, there are different measures of what's success in every community. There are some communities that, you know, want to drive homeownership. And there are others that are looking to diversify their rental housing offerings or to create rental housing because they have none. There's, there's just such a wide range of, of different ways that communities are advancing affordable housing.
Right. And to understand some possibilities or maybe constraints. As you know, the arts community is struggling, I mean, with the loss of the Myright property, meaning they're being affected. Would this be something that could maybe help them find studio space? Ideally, I think it'd be good if an artist could find living space that he could also use as studio space. Would that be, again, something that this could be used for, is that out of bounds?
As long as there is a focus on the affordability of the housing units, those might also be used as artist live workspaces. And there, I can't give you a specific example that has housing trust funds in it, just because I wouldn't know, but low income housing tax credits, which are really one of the primary subsidies that hopefully we will leverage and that the housing corporation of Arlington leverages in, in just about all their projects. Those have been used in many, many cases in others, in other states and here to develop live workspace for artists.
Thank you. Just thinking out loud, appreciate it.
Did you have something to add? All right, Mrs. DeCossi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do want to thank Ms. Ray and Ms. Kelleher for the presentation. And we, Ms. Ray, gosh, it was back in January of 2020, at the time when we had our joint meeting with the redevelopment board. And at the time, you, you laid out what the plan was and, and we decided that this is a strategy within the housing production plan. So I certainly support that and I'm really excited about the, the flexibility that it can create that quickly if, if an opportunity arises. I just have one question. In terms of, I know when you went before the finance committee, there was a recommendation to come back to the select board if there was any borrowing that takes place. Is there anything else that beyond that in, in the bylaw or that was discussed that would require you to come back to a town board or, or committee?
Ms. Ray?
Specifically the select board?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. The bylaw specifically names the select board as the entity that we would return to for borrowing, for helping to name the auditor, for talking about, for providing a quarterly report, and also to potentially routinely discuss the operation of the trust. So there would be membership of some of the board on the trust as well. So I think that that sort of, that, that relationship will, will only work to strengthen the work of the trust, but also will provide this board with a lot of information about the operations and how things are moving. In terms of working with any other bodies, I mean, certainly the housing plan implementation committee, probably the redevelopment board, which was talked about a little bit earlier as part of Ms. Mahan's question. And I'm certain that depending upon if we had, you know, opportunities come up where we're working with Community Preservation Act funds, you know, we would talk with the Community Preservation Act Committee. We would probably discuss things with the CDBG Subcommittee. There's a lot of sort of cross communication with different funding resources and people who are managing those resources. And then I guess potentially the finance committee, you know, where they may wish for some other discussions, perhaps annually or, or at other points in time. So I think that those are probably the main entities that would, where we would frequent perhaps, or certainly be required to provide updates or have regular checkpoints in time over the course of a year. Beyond that, I think it would be project specific. And I'm certain that depending upon the type of project that involves development, you have a lot of other boards or commissions or working groups or other types of town bodies that get involved. So it would sort of be project dependent. I also think that we would be working with different community based organizations. And I think there's some really great opportunities to work in partnership with, with a lot of other entities. I'm certainly hopeful of continuing to strengthen our relationship with the existing housing organizations, but also to work with people who are talking about or who are interested in housing and social justice issues and issues of housing equity. I think that there's actually a lot of different entities, whether they're formal or a committee at a, a local congregation in, in the community. I think people are interested in, in diving into this topic. And so I can see, I can see some real synergy that could be created as, as a result of the trust.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to thank you both for your presentation. I know we've been talking about this for, it seems like a couple of years now, but housing affordability is a crisis in Arlington and every block that we can put to help fight housing affordability crisis is great. And I think this is a large step in the right direction. So this is a public hearing. So at this time, anyone that would like to speak on this article, if you can use the raised hand function on your Zoom app and we'll generate a list. And each opponent will have three minutes to discuss any item related to the article. Mr. Chaplin?
Right now, there is one hand raised and it's Pat Hanlon.
We can vote. Hello, Pat, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now? I've got myself unmuted, I think.
Yes, we can. Can you just say for the record?
My name is Pat Hanlon. I'm a town meeting member in precinct five and I've been affiliated with Equitable Arlington since its beginning and have strongly in support of this initiative. I just want to really make two points. One is that it's really important to preserve the flexibility of this body. It's, it's always tempting because we all have our ideas as to what's the best path to follow. But that changes from time to time and it's important to be able to deal with this on an annual basis. And it's also important, it's important to be able to have tactical flexibility that when opportunities present themselves or when opportunities can be created, the trust fund and the trustees are, are ready, are ready to go. So I think I've, I've agreed a lot with many of the suggestions that have been made in some of the communications that have been sent around. And I just think that it's important for the trustees to consider them and it's important for town meeting not to tie their hands. And second, it relates to the money. I've, I've noticed in looking at my bank account that all the flexibility in the world doesn't help that much if you don't have much in it. And I think that it's important to think also about the funding here. And we have an article that I think will come, come up in the spring that we need to be strongly in supportive of. And we need to be thinking about all the different ways to marshal the funds that are available together so that this, which is kind of a central agency, the quarterback, if you will, of affordable housing effort, is able to assemble the resources and then use them in a strategic way to achieve the town's goals. So this is a first step. It's an important step. I think it's important to make sure that we have as flexible a tool as we possibly can. But it's also important for us to be working on making sure that the people who operate that tool have got the resources to do the job that we hope that they will do.
And Ms. Chaplin, do you have any additional speakers? You're muted.
Sorry. One additional hand, Jordan Weinstein.
All right, Mr. Weinstein, if you could just say your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Jordan Weinstein. I'm a town meeting member from precinct 21. I just wanted to support and and agree with everything that Pat Hanlon just said. I think at a time when, first of all, I, I, I'm so grateful that town media, the, the select board and town meeting will be taking up such a a fund because this is exactly the kind of tool that I was hoping we would come to rather than such a dependence on solely a market transactional based thing. But my thinking is that at a time when folks are making huge pots of money on such a good real estate market here in Arlington, when they sell their properties, I think it's reasonable to think of a funding mechanism that assesses some kind of fee on those transactions, the sales. I would think that it's reasonable to think that people, sellers in Arlington, when they're getting out of such a, getting so much profit and capital gain and, or whatever appreciation on their properties after so many years, that there might be a mechanism to say, okay, now it's, you know, it's appropriate for you to give back to the community and help those less fortunate who didn't have parents who bought in the 1950s or 60s or 70s and were able to pass on their properties to you so that you now can, you know, can inherit that, that advantage and, and take advantage of that privilege. So I think on so many levels, this is such a good idea, both economically and, and also uh and and also historically and morally. So I just applaud you all for taking it up uh in considering it tonight. Thank you.
And Ms. Chaplin, anyone additional?
Nope, no, no additional.
And with that, we will close public forum on this. Right, I will turn again to Ms. Mahan for any comments, questions, emotions?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move approval.
All right, and Mr. Curl?
Second.
And Mr. Dickens, anything additional?
Thank you.
Mr. DeCossi?
Nothing further.
All right, Attorney Hine?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna assume that the uh motion is happy with the language that we've uh proposed. So I will uh proceed with the roll call vote. Uh, Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. DeCossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dickens?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Do you have a miss vote?
Thank you, and thank you both for participating.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, that brings us to our next Warren article hearing.
Mr. Chair, I I just just so you know, I'm gonna turn off my video for a moment because I have to switch locations to the home, but I I will still be connected.
Okay.
To audio. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have Article twenty-five, Resolution Black Lives Matter Banner at Town Hall. And do we have the proponents with us, Mr. Chaplin?
I believe so. I will promote Katell Gillick.
Katell, is there anyone else I should be promoting as part of your presentation on the article?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Gillick, if you can just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your your Warren article?
Sure. So my name is Katell Gillick. I'm living in Arlington in precinct nineteen for about twelve years. And I'm one of the current co-chairs of the Invision Arlington Diversity Task Group. Um, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk today about the Warren article. I know that you all um have a copy of it. Do you do you need me to read the Warren article? No?
No, we have the language. Yep.
Okay, great. Um, so I appreciate you listening this evening in terms of the importance of hanging the rehanging the Black Lives Matter banner on Arlington Town Hall and even though I'm speaking um for myself, of course, I'm just one person out of many people who are advocating that the banner be reinstated. So as you know, many groups have endorsed this Warren article and they include the Envision Arlington Diversity Task Group, the Arlington Human Rights Commission um at our Arlington High School, the Black Student Union, Arlington Helps Mutual Aid, Arlington Fights Racism, the Mystic Valley Chapter of the NAACP, and as well, um Dee Dee Delgado, who is an anti-racist educator and activist. Um, she was the founder and former director of of the Cambridge Chapter of Black Lives Matter, and she also was um a guest speaker that Arlington had at the Black Lives Matter Day virtual event that that the Human Rights Commission um hosted over the summer. In addition, um there was, um, you know, after the banner was taken down, there was an online petition of community members that gathered over three hundred and fifty signatures. And and then for this Warren article, we in twenty-four hours, we gathered over two hundred in-person signatures to bring the Warren article forward. So I mentioned all that just because I show it shows, I think, some really broad support um behind maintaining this this banner on Town Hall. Um, so I know you all have documents that I submitted to the select board prior to the meeting. I just want to take this time to really briefly address why I feel this action is so critical for our town and and also maybe some of the concerns that that there might be around around rehanging the banner. This is this is a really crucial moment in our history, in our country's history, and then, of course, in our town's history that you know, we really can't allow us to ignore or pass by. It's an opportunity to affirm the humanity of black lives and to denounce the ongoing ways that black Americans are systemically oppressed. And in that way, there is no town or city that's immune from concerns over racial justice. In fact, I find it's really important to name these as human rights, as basic human rights. And I feel that the town of Arlington has recognized that through its many efforts to promote racial equity. Efforts that I know are still ongoing and will continue to be ongoing. And I think they show our values as a town, and these are values that transcend politics. They transcend labels like left wing and right wing or Democrat or Republican or, you know, pro-police and anti-police. They are human rights that transcend these labels. And I think many of these labels and the effort to connect the labels with Black Lives Matter is really a distraction from the central message behind Black Lives Matter. And it's understandable, people will project their own fears, their own assumptions, their own beliefs, but project them onto this banner, which is really, you know, there to kind of symbolize something and to give hope to so many people. Our efforts as a town, your efforts to change policies, to make our schools more inclusive, to bring our communities together, all of that is so vital and is, I know, is going to continue. And some people, I think, worry that, you know, maybe putting a banner up will kind of look like a checkmark and make us complacent, like, okay, the job's done. We hung up a banner. But I think what we need to do as a town is let people know that our outward-facing profile needs to match our inward-facing actions, right? So it's clear to everyone where we stand. And I don't believe Arlington needs to shy away from making a public statement. Rather, I think we need to embrace it. Inclusivity is very important for all, and I think hanging a Black Lives Matter banner does not take away from that idea. In fact, I think it affirms that idea of inclusivity for all. And other marginalized communities, for example, the LGBTQ community have affirmed that this is a time in our history when we do need to center black lives and that this does not take away from our support for all of those oppressed groups. I also believe that a banner, a flag, a symbol, it creates an emotional connection between the town and its residents, between its black and brown residents, between with all its residents. And it lets them know that they're seen, that they're important, and they're a valued member of the community every time they see that symbol. And you see that borne out in the efforts that many, many people have made in town to put a Black Lives Matter uh sign in their yard. Schools have hung it up in front of businesses. So, you know, this is something that many people in town are are clearly behind. Finally, I want to say that I was recently asked by someone, um, well, could you couldn't you hang a banner that had different wording? You know, it doesn't have to be that Black Lives Matter banner. Couldn't it be something that says, well, Arlington supports black residents, supports the importance of black lives and and I responded to that question by saying that, you know, as a white person, as someone who is in that dominant racial group, I can't answer that because to answer that as a white person would be to co-opt a movement, a human rights movement that I did not create because my human rights are not being infringed upon in the same way. And so it's really up to the voices of those people seeking equal human rights to speak to that. And so so if that's something that the town's considering, I I would strongly encourage you and town leaders to to speak with black and brown residents, to speak with the local groups that that support them, to determine if some kind of alternate banner would achieve the same goal. But until then, I think refusing to rehang the banner really stands out as a very visible gap in our commitments, in Arlington's commitment to racial justice. Thank you so much for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Turn to the board for any questions, comments, motions. Uh, Mr. DeCossi?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and uh tha- thank you, Ms. Gillick, for the uh for the presentation. And I know we're gonna have public participation um later on here and um I I have a couple of comments now, Mr. Chairman, and then I did would like to reserve further comments after the 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 public portion. And and one thing I want to say is, you know, we've we've gone through um a process here on the board since since June eighth, when when we issued the proclamation and and we first voted um to to for to to condemn all racist acts um and and to to recognize that black lives matter. And we've had a couple of meetings since then, and and the one thing I want to say is I completely respect the you're bringing the motion and 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 putting it before the board. Uh, one thing that does concern me is we we may have a difference of opinion whether the statements that we're making or the actions that we're taking go 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 far enough. Um, but I I think you know, one one issue of 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 concern is, you know, whether this goes forward at 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 town meeting, which I I I think it will um or or doesn't. Um, you know, if if there is a group or or people who are committed um to ending systemic racism and to 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 working on on racial equity in the community. Um, you know, whether they support the permanent display of the banner or not, I don't I don't think that should be the test of whether they're committed to making that change. And that's that's one thing that concerns me um a little bit in terms of whether this is, you know, will will be viewed that way. But I I I want to hear from the public speakers. I want to talk a little bit more later on, but I want to want to thank you for bringing it before us.
And Mr. Dickens?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, and thanks for um meeting with us. Uh, Ms. Gillick, is that how you say it last name?
It's Gillick.
Gillick, thank you. Sorry, sorry about that. So I'm I have a bunch of questions, you know, and 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 um, you know, we'll get to know each other a little bit uh through through questions. But first, I want to say that eh I support the overall goal, eh, of Black Lives Matters clearly eh, and I consider you and all of the groups that you mentioned allies in the cause. Uh, it's a it's a it's an important cause, you know, and uh the description of the goals be are pretty far-reaching, which is good, you know, uh, and and I I would include under that, you know, which I didn't see to the extent that I would like, be it um environmental justice, which also touches on climate because that is paramount. Uh, and and so uh, and as you know, the effects of climate change may really do affect eh poor communities, which do tend to have a correlation uh with people of color much more intensely. So um, look, let's just be realistic about what's likely to happen here. Uh, is that this is under the control of the select board and you have a good sense of how we feel about it, which is why the banner came down. Eh, so I'm curious, me, what is the objective of of the resolution, given the likelihood of the outcome?
I think that the objective is to um allow town meeting to to weigh in on this in terms of right, you know, how many people are represented by town meeting um and how small um, you know, the number of people on the select board are. So I'd like to widen the conversation as an as a way to also, you know, bring more voices in Arlington into that conversation and hear what comes out of that. And also, I I am not deterred by the fact that, you know, as you say, you you think the outcome is is a given here on the select board because, you know, I respect people's ability to evolve, to think about things um to hear, you know, how the citizens of their town who they're representing feel. Um, so, yeah.
Fine, fine. So that's that's fine. I mean, I'm not trying to convince you of anything, just like I said, just trying to um get a sense of um of of how you think, how you operate, because, you know, I look forward to working with you. Uh, and and so the more we get to know each other, uh, the better, I think, we'll be able to work with each other towards um getting um short-range and long-range goals. Uh, so I'm kind of flipping back and forth between virtual desktops here, so that's why my eyes are changing. So let's um let's just say the banner doesn't go back up. Me, um, what will you do?
Um, can you can you be a little more specific with your question when you say?
No, me, so what's 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 the what's the what's the next plan? I mean, so so we, what will you do? I mean, it's just like the clearly, there are things to do. We would restrict to trying to improve things for all people. Um, black eh, all the people that are included in the umbrella of Black Lives Matter eh. I I would ask it a different way. Eh, um, what are you doing in conjunction with trying to get the banner up? But let's say the banner doesn't go up, what will you do?
So the reason I think I kind of hesitated on your question is when you say me, you know, when I say I or you say, what will you do?
And that's you, because I want you to speak for yourself. Yeah, I don't want you to speak for anyone else because chances are you can't. And that's usually the answer when you ask that kind of question. So it is directed at you.
Yeah. So what I will do is um I will continue to serve with Envision Arlington's Diversity Task Group. Um, one of the things I really appreciate about the Diversity Task Group is that it's a place where everyone is welcome to come and talk about diversity and inclusion, to be heard, to process. And it's a very, it's a it's a group that has a very long view. So when you talk about short-term goals and long-term goals, you know, there are many really important initiatives that have come out of the Diversity Task Group over many, many years. Um, and I I'm a person that appreciates that this is something that requires a a long view. Um, at the same time, I will also continue to use my voice when I feel that there are opportunities to do so and when it makes sense. And I felt compelled to bring this forward right now because, as I said, this this felt like a particularly momentous time, and with everything that Arlington has been doing to try to educate its citizens and make policy changes and promote racial justice, it was puzzling to see the decision for the the banner to come down. The timing of it was odd. Um, so that's that's why I think, as I said before, I I was hoping for broader discussion at town meetings so that I could get a better understanding, because I also have to continue to educate myself. And, you know, you were saying earlier, like, well, you have a really good sense of where we stand as the select board. I don't know that that's true. I don't really actually have a great understanding. It's not that I expect to be educated on it tonight, but I I want to continue to broaden my understanding as to why town leadership, you know, feels that this is a bad idea. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that
That that's that's fine. That's fine. You know, eh, so so I'll I'll tell you where I'm coming from. Eh, it's not the Black Lives Matter banner, for say, being it's um any banner uh on Town Hall. Uh, and so I I've just eh, um, I am philosophically opposed to uh banners on of any kind on Town Hall uh as a gay person. In fact, there's my shirt. It uh, uh, I I I could understand the motive behind having a gay pride banner on Town Hall, uh, but eh had I been asked whether to do that or not, eh, I would have said no. Uh, but I'd love to having the banners uh on the light poles uh in the Arlington Center. I think it'd be great. I think their ideas about expanding that and putting them in the east, eh, I think it made a really bold visual statement eh, that was seen by many more people uh and and as opposed to being on Town Hall itself. Eh, and eh, I I think the weakness in my argument is that I say I would not like to have a banner on Town Hall just as I wouldn't want to have a banner on a courthouse if we have one because I feel that eh we have to have a an element of neutrality to certain kinds of institutions eh in town. And that's what I really mean by inclusiveness. Eh, and I'll come back uh to that a little bit with another series of questions. Eh, uh, but I'm not opposed to having it on public property. And I understand the inconsistency of that, but I'm willing to go with that because I think it is fine for the town to express uh its values and and to use public property to do that. Uh, it's fine with me. Uh, and I think with the amount of real estate that you have, uh, with the light poles, eh, it gives you the ability to have something permanent and And other things to go along with it, so it's not kind of blocking out the space and not allowing anything else to go there. Because whereas you say, and I believe you, it's not, whereas you say that the the gay community is supporting Black Lives Matter and says it needs to step back. Be as a gay black person who really identifies as as being gay and having. Dealt with a black community that is not terribly friendly at times towards gay people. I am reluctant to say we'll have the banner up there all the time and not. And have the gay people have to come and ask to have a banner put up, and if we're going to have a space. We should allow other things to go up if it's a very rare or or or, yep, if it's a piece of real estate, that's that's rare. Or or that's not quite the right word, but you know what I mean, and so that's part of the issue that I have with the permanency of it, but more so, I mean, it's really a matter. Of it being on Town Hall, and so as I've told other people, I would be fine putting a Black Lives Banner be across the intersection. Of Pleasant Street and Mass Ave, just something big, if you want to put it on every street coming into town, that would be fine with me too. But I'm just not going to support any banners being from now on on Town Hall, now I want to five. Being and so, I don't know how far that will go, but that's why my position is kind of locked in on this, but you could say something that will change my mind. All right, but but to maybe to understand why this be that I am opposed to a banner on Town Hall. Imagine that we're in a conservative town. And and now the issue is unborn lives and and we know how intense that discussion could be. And there was a banner. Unborn Lives Matter on Town Hall, would you feel that's appropriate? It's a conservative town now, most of the people support that cause, and so now on Town Hall, we have a banner that says unborn lives matter.
Well, I I'm I, first of all, I want to answer that question, I also want to recognize it's it's provocative, right? It's a provocative question.
Yes, it is.
The reason that I don't equate those is because. I'm biased, right, I'm biased, but the reason I I don't, I think that's a false equivalency is because.
I'm not equating them.
The issue around abortion rights has to do with religious belief. Whereas the issue to me with the Black Lives Matter movement is about human rights, it has nothing to do with religious beliefs.
But 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 that can be divorced from religion.
I I personally don't think it it can.
Okay, all right, so but so then, but then you understand then why religious things shouldn't be on.
Well, that's right, because we have a separation of church and state, so I don't I don't see that Black Lives Matter has anything to do with religious beliefs.
Okay, yeah, okay, I got it, I hear you, okay, so I think I have another. Okay, so kind of along the lines of what I was asking on the Affordable House Fund. Any evidence that signs make a difference?
That's such a good question, no, I can't say that I'm here prepared with scientific evidence for you on that, that's a great question. And I'd I'd love to do research and come back to you with that and. But I if I said that my evidence was more than anecdotal, I'd I'd be lying.
All right, all right, well, thank you very much, but like I said, I want to work with you on 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 this, because I think we can do some creative things with banners.
Can I ask you a question about something you said?
Sure.
I just want to understand the difference between hanging a banner at the cross section of an entrance into town and hanging it on Town Hall. Because hanging a banner over Pleasant Street and Mass Ave clearly would be something that a town, only a town would be authorized to do that.
Right, it's a I don't have a problem with us using government property to do it, or public property to do it, but but I do equate. In Town Hall with like a government, like with like a courthouse, and there's certain structures, certain government structures that. I just think should have no banners on them, and so a courthouse would be one, we don't have one out here in town, but if we did, maybe I wouldn't support it, but I do. Equate being Town Hall with that, and so so I mean, at this point, my position is no banners of any kind, you know, on Town Hall, but. I'll support banners anywhere else in town, not anywhere else, but certainly on the light poles and.
So you wouldn't support the plaque then on Town Hall that was talked about with.
All right, so this isn't a question back to the opportunity for the board to have comments and questions, so I'm gonna, so I will.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I violated the rules, so, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry about that, John, sorry about the Mr. Chair, you know.
I allow some latitude, but Mrs. Chaplin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I I feel compelled, I I know the term a plaque has been used a number of times in the past several select board meetings. And I don't mean to single you out, Kotel, because you're you're one in a long line of people who have said it, but I I don't believe any board member, nor I have ever proposed a plaque. I I I think the term plaque has been used to diminish what the select board voted on several meetings ago. You know, I think we all think of a plaque as something about the size of our laptop screen, and that's certainly not what the board voted, and it's certainly not what's posted on the construction fence right now. In front of Town Hall, so again, I don't mean I don't mean to pick on you in particular for saying that, but. I I felt like this was a good opportunity to clarify that that's a complete misrepresentation of.
Oh, no, I really appreciate that, any whatever appropriate word, I I want to use it.
Great, so I'll move on to Mr. Curl.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Ms. Gallic, for your eloquent presentation. Nice to make your acquaintance, I I appreciate that you framed this within the broader context of the work that. That the town is doing, including the Envision Arlington Diversity Task Group, because I think it's important. However, this debate plays out either here or at at town meeting. It's important that we're we we remain unified and keep our eye on all of of the concrete measures that we can take in town. To move forward, the the cause of racial justice, I know that I and and a lot of others, I mean, were really. You know, proud to 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 raise the. The banner on on Town Hall back in in June. We we did so. In the context of. The the George Floyd incident, Breonna Taylor and and the outpouring. That we saw in our residents in solidarity with that and wish to be in solidarity with. With our our black and brown residents, as well as those who were supporting them, and so we we did raise the the banner. In time for Juneteenth, and you probably recall that part of the proclamation associated with that was also a local. A proclamation of a local observance of Black Lives Matter Day, and we then ultimately. Chose to extend it throughout the summer. In conjunction with our our series of community conversations on race reform. So my my understanding is that. We're one of five communities in in of the three hundred fifty one in Massachusetts that that have done that, some have done it permanently. Some, like North Hampton, have periodically displayed the banner in conjunction with certain observances, and so. What I think, when you ask what what the thinking is with this board, at least as far as my thinking goes, is that traditionally. The only messaging displays that we've had on Town Hall have been either in conjunction with specific. Observances, events, or or town initiatives, and so I think we stretched it a bit there, and we so we we lasted three and a half. Months or 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 some such, and we had some discussion about whether there'd be a a way to. Either bring it back there or or another location, so Mr. Dickens has discussed in in the future. You know, that said, I mean, I. I I have a lot of respect for the fact that that proponents were able to collect over two hundred signatures in the middle pandemic to bring this forward. And and. I I have. I am interested in what what town meeting has to say on this. Because they they, there are two hundred fifty two town meeting members, and there's been a lot of passion around this, so. I I'm interested in hearing whether town meeting. Feels that it's appropriate to break with the precedent, you know, and I and I think that this is some of the conversations that we've had. All along around issues is, we've always done it this way before, right? So. I I'm not going to make any motions right right now, because like like. Like my colleagues, I want to hear from the the public who weigh in on this, but. That's kind of where my head is at right now, is to the thinking behind why it was a temporary display. In in the first place, and my thinking around, you know. You know, how we might. You know, hear from town meeting members, but that said, I I hope that no matter what. Happens tonight, that we we do reflect in the comments, which I I think is pretty well understood that, you know, town meeting. Town meeting weighs in on this, and it's advisory, and. That there there is a history of, you know, taking advisory resolutions like that seriously, if it's if it's decisive, but. It it just, it's important because. You know, part of our 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 charge, I think, in education also is is to make clear what what. Some of the separation of powers is within within the the town governance structure too, but but. I said that not very eloquently, not nearly as eloquently as you made your presentation, but that that's where my head is at right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Gallic, I'll try to be brief. And just give you my thoughts, which sometimes get me, and some people, they're blow pressure up a little bit. Here's my thoughts, I'm just going to be politely blunt as I can, I spoke into so many people of color, students of color, alumni. I hadn't spoken to the current students of color at the high school, but. Residents, town employees, and. Every person I've spoken to, people, person of color, have said to me, basically, that banner is what you white people do. So it makes you feel good that you're saying, you know, you're against racism and the like. And what they've said to me, what's more important to them is, you know, actions, policies. Forward-thinking steps to. Not only take those steps, but also to listen to people of color, and I I know when we when we hung the Black Lives Matter banner, there were fifty or sixty people there. All but three were white. And one was Mr. Diggins, and one of the things that I observed, and I kind of observed it tonight to a lesser extent. You know, for my many, many years, you know, since Rodney King, since nineteen ninety one, I've been reading everything that's come out. You know, when I thought we would have a watershed moment to police brutality. Against a black man, and I'm sad we're here in twenty twenty, him was, you know. I think this time, hopefully, we're going to move forward, but the one, number one tannamount thing that I've read, I've when I've attended seminars, when you could attend with people. And when we got the training from National League of Cities through the real. Format, as well as when Michael Curry came out, is number one thing we white men and women of privilege need to do. Is to engage with people of color and listen. Listen to what they say, I know what that, when we hung the banner. We had a particular individual from AFR that did the exact opposite, and and one of the things I've learned is I need to listen to people of color. It's really not a conversation, it's listening, and it's not. Combated back and forth, even if I said, listen, I had a party and I had ten people of color there, so. You're wrong, well, it doesn't matter, it's it's what the person of color's life experience is, and and I agree with Mr. Diggins. I have quite a few friends, cheerleaders, et cetera. To me, the most. Discriminated against community are black lesbian women, no disrespect to Mr. Diggins. In terms of violence and and atrocities attributed to them, and so here we have you tonight, you know, you're like me, a white woman of privilege. Coming forth, I was really hearkened by one of the things you said, when you said, you know, perhaps it shouldn't be Black Lives Matter, perhaps it should be something else. But I don't know what that is, because I'm not a person of color, I'm a white person, I agree with you. I think so many people have just rallied behind a Black Lives Matter banner. In in town meeting, two hundred fifty two members, mostly white men and women. I would like to see what I think the town's doing and what the Envision Diversity Task Force Group and other groups can do that you named. Is going out there and contacting persons of color. And in hearing from them about what's important, if they say it is a banner, you know, what should the word wording be? I I'm told that when the We Believe Black Lives Matter banners went up at the high school, there were meetings around that. And there were students of color there, I don't know if there were any adults of color there. So I I certainly am, you know, want to hear from town meeting, but I'm just telling you, like, I started here tonight. It it's a defense mechanism that comes in when we're supposed to be having these conversations confronting racism. You need to listen, and even if in my heart, I think this person of color is completely wrong, that's not right, that's not what happened, that's not my intent. The way I've been turned, been told is you need to listen and take that and then say to that person, well, how do we change that experience? Whether it's a housing experience, whether it's an employment experience. Versus going back and forth, so, I mean, you have a person of color on the board that's telling you one thing, but you're still. And to me, the all the training I've gotten, that's not the way to go, I I would, I definitely want to hear a conversation, resolution to town meeting, I have no problem with that. But take in your audience that's making that decision, I think we need to really put our. Feet to the road and actually speak to people of color, students or adults. You know, have forums like that, like the town has been doing, that have been led largely, if not. Totally by people of color in terms of leading a conversation and doing the outreach to get. Students and and people of color involved in the process, so. And I I don't mean to, I I'm just because I I've heard from a lot of persons of color here in Arlington and outside of Arlington, and. You know, here are all us white people arguing about a Black Lives Matter banner. Versus some other things, I'd I'd love to see your energy, regardless of where this goes after town meeting, I mean, look at who your audience is at town meeting. The audience needs to be people of color that confront racism every day, whether it's, you know. You can't send your child out on a bicycle after five, six o'clock at night, and you tell them, don't put your hood up on your hoodie, you know, things like that. I think we need to be doing the outreach to actual people of color and and see what it is they want to do, instead of all of us. With the exception of Mr. Diggins, white people of privilege talking about the banner, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and I also do want to hear what the public has to say, I don't want to reiterate everything that the board said, but I did. You know, this has come up a few times as far as the timeline, and sort of the process, really the process with this banner. We, as a board, probably bungled it a little bit, and it's made this look a little worse than it actually is. So like Mr. Diggins, Mr. Coro said, mentioned, it's always been a a policy to not hang. Policy banners on Town Hall, we did this in June in response to a horrific incident. To show solidarity with our black brothers and sisters and to just reconfirm the work that we'd already been doing to address. Systematic racism, both in town and abroad. And in when doing so, we had a proclamation that the banner was originally originally going to come down in July. In over the summer, we were still engaging in our community conversations, and we, as a board, decided to leave it up. So once we decided that, the only way for the banner to come down is for an additional vote vote of the board. To take the banner down, so in the sense that people have said to us, while you voted to take that banner down and insinuating that we know, we don't. And insinuating that we know we don't care about Black Lives Matter, and we're abandoning our efforts on to combat racial injustice. That's just not true, it's just the only way we could take that down, and there's some misinformation that went out around the time we. Took this vote in September as just the timing of the vote. And so and there are a few individuals that were suggesting that it had to do with the Black the Blue Rally. However, what the people that reached out to me, I responded, I said, if you just check the tape of the July meeting. We had taken a vote and we had said that the the town manager was going to come back to us at our September meeting. With a plan for the future of the banner, where it was going to go after we moved from Town Hall. So it was always the intention, regardless of whatever other extracurricular events. Came around that we're the we were going to have the banner up until. Until September, which is far longer than I think any banner has ever hung on Town Hall. You know, we, like Mr. Diggins, you you know, we have, there's been many, many, many people. That have come to our meetings and reached out to us in support of the banner, but we've also heard from people in town that. Have reached out to us about removing the banner, both when it's up, after it's up. And many of the people that re- reached out to us didn't say they didn't support the cause of Black Lives Matter, some people did, and we took. Some of those comments with a grain of salt, but some people just said in their. They don't support any sort of banner hanging on Town Hall for a prolonged prolonged period, whether or not they agree with that. And I think that was really where the board comes from with this policy. Is that it's never been the policy to have a banner hanging perpetuity. And, you know, was our intention to have this one as well? And I think as we get into further discussions about where an appropriate place to hang an equivalent banner would be. As well as when would be appropriate times to bring the that banner back and replace it in its location at Town Hall. You know, I think we can have productive conversations about that and we can come to a consensus. Then, you know, you're not going to make everyone happy on this particular issue, but I I think we can come to an agreement on that. You know, we ju- we're all, I'm sure, tired with the events of the last couple of days as we watched. Election results drag on, and though I'm confident with what I'm seeing. You could see that there's still a lot of divisiveness in this country. So we've dealt with from both sides divisiveness and it's it's not nobody's. No, there's nobody to blame, it's just th- this contentious issues that we've been dealing with in town. For the past couple of years, and I think locally, we really need to get to a place where we're having really positive. Discussions about issues, particularly issues of race and systemic racism, and I think we'll get there. And I don't think it it all hinges on whether or not we can, we raise the banner at Town Hall. You know, I am interested to see what the thoughts of town meeting are on this. But like I said, the work continues, we as a board, our town manager, our town council. Have all in many occasions committed to acknowledging systemic and institutional racism and individual racism that. Still exists in this town, we know that it exists, we we know that there's work to be done, we're committed to that work. Um, and I look forward to having positive discussions with all members of the town about how we fight that. So with that, this is a public hearing. So anyone wishing to speak on this issue, use the raise hand function on your Zoom app and we will tabulate a list of speakers.
We have a number of hands, Mr. Hurd, would you like me to start reading you the names?
Yeah, can you, so we're gonna take the list now. Open it and close it, so if you could run down the list and I will write down the names.
The first name is Drake Pusey, P U S E Y. Rebecca Gruber. Rajiv Sonaja. Anna Henkin. Melanie Brown. Eric Dion.
One moment.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, Eric.
Dion, D I O N.
Yep.
Elizabeth Dre. And Jordan Weinstein.
Alright, so that is.
Gordon Jamison put his hand up right, right, right as you were finishing the last name.
I didn't finish writing Jordan's last name, so I'll give it to him. Alright, so we have nine speakers that will close our list for the public hearing, and you can promote Drake.
Hello, uh I'm Drake Pusey, um I live at one sixty-two Overlook Road. And I am a member of the Human Rights Commission. Uh but um and although the Human Rights Commission has already endorsed this article, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, of course. Um, I thought it was a great idea for the select board to decide to display a holistic. Uh statement based on the bylaws about inclusive inclusivity in our community, but. I don't think that is mutually exclusive with a Black Lives Matter statement um of support. Because that specificity is very important right now. Arlington has received reports of about twenty incidents specifically against Black Lives Matter. Uh against that message, vandalism and harassment, and luckily, we haven't seen this in Arlington yet, but. Um across the country, we have seen uh hate crime, assaults, national park vandalism, specifically. Speaking to the statement, black lives don't matter, and so this is a really crucial opportunity. For our town to make a proactive statement against that idea. And to reaffirm the commitment towards um being human rights champions, fighting racism. And standing up as allies, that was made in the Black Lives Matter proclamation earlier this year. Messages from leadership definitely matter, I think this election has really been putting a spotlight on that fact. Um and old procedures will not do not drive new outcomes, I think the reason. These wat- these these devastating watershed watershed moments like Rodney King and George Floyd. Have not brought lasting change is because, I mean, more than symbolically, the banners do get taken down. Out of sight, out of mind, the issue returns to the back burner. And it doesn't get the change it deserves until the next horrifying incident brings it back, and so. Even though it's just a banner and some people will see it as a stamp and some people will see it as not enough, of course, it's not enough. But that statement of support from leadership is very important, and until the problem is actually solved. The community needs that support, um so I would encourage the town, um I would encourage the board to. Support it and especially to really um listen to what the town meeting has to say about it. Thank you, if I have extra time, I yield it.
Sorry, I'll reset your time, I was muted, if you could just say your name for the record?
Yes, Rebecca Gruber. Um, first of all, I do want to acknowledge I'm speaking today as a white woman. A person who has privilege due to my whiteness to speak without fear. I am speaking in favor of Article twenty-five requesting the return of the Black Lives Matter banner to its location on Town Hall. I believe the prior decision by you, the select board, to take down the banner was a mistake. Yes, the Black Lives Matter banner is a symbol and should not take the place of actions to dismantle white supremacy and structural racism. But it's an important symbol, reminding us of the inherent biases, prejudices and racism we all are prey to. According to published data, in twenty twenty in the United States, the police have murdered a black man or woman every week. I repeat, at least one black man or woman has been murdered by the police every week this year. You may not know their names, but since you took the banner down at the end of September. Jonathan Price was murdered on October third by the police, Stanley Cochran was murdered on October eighth. Tyron Dent was murdered on October eighth. Fred Williams was murdered on October sixteenth. Akbar Muhammad Edie was murdered on October sixteenth. Marcella Stinet was murdered on October twentieth. Rodney Arnes Barnes was murdered on October twentieth. Gregory Jackson was murdered on October twenty-first. Mark Matthew Bender was murdered on October twenty-second. Jakarian Shimon Jackson was murdered on October twenty-fourth. Walter Wallace Junior was murdered on October twenty-six by the police. The Black Lives Matter banner must be put back up and must stay up until the day all lives really do matter. Please support Warren Article Number Twenty-Five, thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Mr. Sanif. I will note, just to save everyone some breath at the end of your statements, you have up to three minutes, so there's no time to yield back at the end. Alright, Mr. Sania. If you can just say your name.
Hi, uh my name is Rajiv Sonaja, I want to pronounce that again, Sonaja. Um, I am a member of the Human Rights Commission, um I reside on Mary Street. Um, even though the Human Rights Commission, as mentioned by Drake Pusey, have endorsed this article. I speak in a personal capacity today in favor of this article. I wanted to say that I so eloquently want to echo and thank Katell for standing up to the select board and making such a strong case. For the banner to be hung on Town Hall. Um, I wanted to add to that and say that in June, when the Black Lives Matter proclamation was adopted by Arlington. It was such a proud moment uh for everybody in this town. The town, the select board made a commitment to reduce racial bias, work towards fighting racism in all its forms. And considering the national conversation that was happening around race at that time, it was a great moment for everybody. But it was only a reminder about the work that needed to follow. At a time in this uh country when racial inequod any inequity and disparities for black and brown people are so clearly apparent. It is imperative that we as a town make renew our commitment towards continuing to work to dismantle systemic racism. The Black Lives Matter movement is not just about protest against police brutality. It's also a statement to undo all the institutional barriers that inhibit parity among races. As the the town manager had recently um brought to the select board about uh working for um. Diversity training for those in town government, that is the great first step. As we move forward with anti-racist policies, the BLM banner on the Town Hall, that provides us a as a visual reminder of the journey that has to come. As an immigrant, myself, and a person who's not of Eurocentric ethnicity, I do identify as a person of color, and I am fully in favor of it. I also see the banner reinforce the belief that the town is a place that welcomes everybody, no matter who they are. It also makes a commitment towards social and racial justice for all marginalized populations. That is why I want to speak and urge all the select board members today to vote in favor of this article, thank you.
Alright, next we have Ms. Henkin. Ms. Henkin, can you hear us?
Hello.
If you could just say your name for the record?
Um, Anna Henkin. One thing that I really wanted to address was how the board had mentioned that the timing was pre-planned. I've been protesting out for Black Black Lives Matter every day since the end of May. Um, and we, the entire time, have got hecklers and harassment, but. The timing of the removal of the banner right after the Black the Black the Blue Rally really dangerously emboldened. Those hecklers and harassers, they felt empowered, and I feel like the timing of that vote was really irresponsible. We've had really nasty slurs and foul things that I am not going to repeat here, thrown at us, we've been. Told that we were going to hell, people in pickup trucks with bull horns have been distractedly driving in the dark down Mass Ave yelling at us. And that's just gone up since the banners come down. Um, and I just feel like that was really, really irresponsible timing for that vote to happen. But furthermore, the fact is, we live in a society, in a system that implicitly and sometimes explicitly doesn't. Value black humanity and the humanity of other groups. I'm not black, but I'm openly queer and disabled and Jewish, I'm very aware of what it's like to have conditional humanity. I've never not known what genocide meant, I've never not known that my entire family is a pile of bones in a mass grave in Belarus. I've never not known that my father was born in Fair and Bald. That banner says that. Black people's humanity matters, but I know that black people's humanity is also my humanity, because if we have conditional humanity for. Even one person, it's conditional humanity for anyone. That banner is a symbol, yes, and we need to obviously have tangible work done to improve racial justice in Arlington. But being able to look up and see that symbol helps you feel like you can keep going when that progress. Feels difficult and scary and far away, there's a reason we wear wedding rings, there's a reason that we. Light memorial candles, there's a reason we have those stupid hang-in-there kitten motivational posters in our offices. Sometimes you just need to look up and see a symbol that someone cares, that you matter, that you're welcome. It matters, this is our humanity on trial, this is.
Three minutes, if you can just wrap up your thought.
I'm all done, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, and we have Melanie Brown.
Hi, Ms. Sania, you say your name?
Yes, uh I am Melanie Brown, I live on Skyline Drive. I am a member of the Arlington Human Rights Commission, I'm also a town meeting member for Precinct Nineteen. Tonight, I am speaking as a black woman. As a resident of this town. I had a whole prepared speech that I was gonna read, but I'd rather respond to some of the things that I've heard and discussion this evening so far. Some of you may have may know that I recently gave an interview with Callie Curry of WBUR Radio. Uh on this very issue of the Black Lives Matter banners and the vandalism against them. Even more than what I contributed to that conversation, what I was blown away by the experiences of people in towns near us. of people in towns near us, in Somerville and in Molden, who were repeatedly violently attacked for displaying their views. Symbols matter. That's why people get upset about them. We did have, in Arlington, some 19, 20 events reported to the HRC. But the important thing to note there is, most of those came in July, shortly after the Town Hall banner went up, but they dropped off significantly until the Town Hall banner came down. Then we had another sudden rash after we had gone weeks with almost no incidences. A few things that I would like to point out. When you say, "Listen to black people," remember that some of the people endorsing the return of the banner are black people. The Black Student Union, members of the Diversity Task Group. DeeDee Delgado, the original founder of Black Lives Matter in Cambridge, who is herself a black lesbian. One of the original founders of the Black Lives Matter movement, Patrice Cullors, is a black lesbian. Black gender queered people are part of the BLM movement. It is one of their goals and tenets that they pursue is justice for not only straight back black people, but for gender queer black people. They pursue justice on environmental policies, economic justice, health justice. These are all issues that out more significantly impact black communities than any others, and they are all part of the BLM platform. I don't like to use platform because it implies the BLM is a political movement when it is not. It is a civil and human rights movement and needs to be viewed through that lens. And that is why I support the return. Well, let me qualify that.
Ms. Brown, you're right about three minutes, if you can just wrap up your thought.
I was just wrapping up my thought. I believe that the importance here is the large number of residents who have spoken out that they wish to bring this matter before Town Meeting. I think that is the important message to be taken tonight. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. All right, and we have Eric Dion. Hi, Mr. Dion, if you could just say your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Eric Dion, and I'm a resident of Arlington, Mass, and I live on Mass Ave in Ward 4. Tonight, I am speaking in favor of reinstating the Black Lives Matter banner, Article 25. Thank you, Ms. Gallic, for your thoughtful and powerful words. Mr. Diggins and Ms. Brown, thank you both for speaking of your personal insights and experiences on this topic. I appreciate hearing these, and I think they're valuable pieces to this conversation that need to be heard. I have stood outside my house on Mass Ave, holding a Black Lives Matter sign for the past five months, nearly every day, in support of my friends and neighbors. I honestly don't believe this alone will somehow solve racism. However, I can speak from experience that I was threatened with a police baton by one individual. Someone else threatened to break into my house in the middle of the night. Countless others have cursed at me. I imagine that there are many more difficulties for a person of color in this community that I am too privileged to experience. On a positive note, I am more engaged with my neighbors. I am more engaged with local government, and I am really happy to see the work that is currently happening. Raising the banner in June was a move voted on by the Select Board. I imagine this was aimed to support our fellow community members. We understand that this was not to be a permanent fixture, and I'm not asking for it to be now. However, it is important to consider that taking down the banner sends a more powerful message, especially the timing in which it was taken down. Why vote to raise it, then vote to take it down with no action plan in place? When the next inevitable incidence of police violence occurs, do we raise a banner just to abandon it again when it is convenient? I think that sends a bad message to our neighbors. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, we have Elizabeth Dre. All right, Ms. Dre, if you can just say your name, Clarkan.
Yes, good evening. Elizabeth Dre, Town Meeting Member for Precinct 8. One of the most upsetting rationales I've heard from the Select Board as a reason to not rehang the Black Lives Matter banner on the Town Hall or schools or town buildings is that hanging the sign, the banner, is divisive and that having no banner is neutral. And having a banner might make some people feel uncomfortable doing business at the Town Hall. And that disappoints me because being divisive doesn't mean it's wrong. The civil rights movement was divisive. The women's suffrage movement was divisive. Gay marriage was divisive. Divisive doesn't mean wrong, and neutrality is not the right approach in the face of injustice. As Desmond Tutu said, "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." For the Select Board to prioritize the feelings of residents who are racist and bigots over the feelings of Arlington's black and brown residents is appalling. And I agree with Selectwoman Mahan that we need to listen to people of color. So I'd like to make sure that she heard that many groups representing people of color or with people of color as board members endorse this article, including the Mystic Valley ACP, the Diversity Task Group, the Black Student Union, DeeDee Delgado from BLM Cambridge, the Human Rights Commission, Arlington Fights Racism, over 200 signees on this petition and over 300 on a previous petition, signees who are people of color. For the Select Board to see this banner as a political statement instead of the human rights issue that it is, is inaccurate and ignorant. And to continue to equate the humans' rights issue to the religious abortion rights issue is misleading. And those who refuse to take a stand and unapologetically be on the side of black lives are complicit in upholding this racist system that we live in. Acknowledging that Black Lives Matter by rehanging a banner on the Town Hall is the minimum that you can do as the leaders of Arlington to acknowledge this history and center our non-white residents. It's the absolute minimum, and I agree with Selectwoman Mahan that policies, actions are more important than the banner, but they're not mutually exclusive. And if rehanging the banner makes some residents feel uncomfortable entering Town Hall, our schools, or town buildings, I'm okay with that, and I hope you are too. And I will be voting in favor of this warrant article at Town Meeting, and I hope you will join me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and our final speaker is Gordon Jamison. Mr. Jamison, can you hear us? Gordon, if you could just say your name for the record.
Gordon Jamison, Town Meeting, Precinct 12, and envision Arlington Fiscal Resource Task Group Member. I enjoyed, I enjoyed hearing the discussion this evening, especially Mr. Diggins and the board members and others. I too have suffered the trials of trying to get 100 signatures for a special Town Meeting warrant. So I understand Ms. Gallic's trials and tribulations in that regard. It was not on this level of things. It was a financial issue many years ago, but it's I'm, in general, against rehanging the banner. And first, as most people understand who are Town Meeting members, we cannot direct the board what to do. They often listen to us, but we cannot direct them how high to jump or whether to jump at all. As I think Mr. Curro might have mentioned, the history or someone else, the history of this issue is, this was, this banner was actually, the hanging of it was actually initiated by the Select Board as part of June, the 19th and the Black Lives Matter Day in Arlington, which I commend. But it also consistent with other issues that have been, other things that have been hung on the, the arts, community structure, which represents the legislative and executive body of the Town, Town Hall. Those are all limited. Mostly, it's when Town Day happens. So I, but while I agree with the concept of hanging the banner, I think it's much more important to, to understand what we can do going forward. And I especially don't want this to be a win or lose, where some people who are in favor of this feel like they got a win out of this, and others might feel like they got a win, a lose, and I think that would be terribly divisive for our town. Diane mentioned the checkmark aspect, Ms. Mahan, I'm sorry, Select Board member, Mahan. And I, I understand that, that get, you know, I'm a white male. You know, that's what I am, okay? And I would hate for us to be hanging things on Town Hall just to check, check, make a checklist. The central message, I think, is very important, and I'm behind that. And I embrace those things, but you know, and I also, the other things were, you know, how, how can we educate the, the community about that? And I think the, the Town Manager, Town Manager hired someone, we passed the budget in 2019 to have Ms. Harvey be on the, on the, on the staff of the town. Way before all we started talking about these things.
Mr. Jamison, you're just at three minutes, if you can wrap up your thought.
I'll finish it in a second. Thank you, Mr. Heard. So I would suggest there are many ways for us to move forward. But this is not the best way forward because it could be Armenian Lives Matter, Irish Lives Matter, Children's Lives Matter, Asian Lives Matter back in the 40s, Jewish Lives Matter back in the 40s. It could be almost anything we could put up there in the history of my ancestors and myself. And I think this is unfortunately not our best move forward, but the concept is great, but not this.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. All right, that will close the public portion of the hearing. I will return to the board for any additional comments, questions. Mr. Corsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Adam, did you mean to demote the proponent?
Yeah, I did because I thought we were going to
Okay, does anyone have additional comments or, okay, all right, go ahead, Mr. Corsey.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to say a few things here, and again, this is been a difficult discussion as, as we've this is the third or fourth time that we've talked about the banner since, since July 8th. And at the time that we, this was the first time the banner, Ms. Harvey, who was, who was just referencing, our Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, you recognize the importance of putting up the banner as a symbol of solidarity. And then at the time that we did that, it was going to be for the 30-day period. But she said, "See actions and work that goes with the statement that truly counts," and I think we all believe that. I think when we have a warrant article that's signed by 100 people and there's 300 people who signed a similar petition to the board, we, we should hear from, we should hear from Town Meeting. However, I, I think we're at a point now where the Town Meeting is on November 16th. This is the first time I've, I've heard from, from Ms. Gallic. They're on top of the issues of, you know, whether the, the board should be supporting an article to Town Meeting telling us to, whether or not to take a particular action, and then I guess it's really to, to direct the Town Manager because he, he is the individual who is responsible for, for Town Hall. I, I, I am fine with, with hearing from Town Meeting on this. But I, but I also think between now and the Town Meeting, maybe we should have some more discussion before we take a vote as to what, what our particular action is. And I'm not talking about it, opening up the hearing again. What I, what I'm talking about is, you may be talking with the proponents, and maybe this is what, what, what they want is, put the, put the resolution before Town Meeting, voted up or down. There is language in there that says, "Take any action related there too." And there were some conversation that, or different proposals and different backgrounds that people might not have been aware of this evening. So I, I want to, you may be considered before we take a final vote, whether, whether we should have a comeback at the next meeting. Maybe one or two members meet with the proponents and, and come back to the full board before we have the final vote. I am concerned about a final vote of the board that that accepts, or not accepts, but a final vote of the board for favorable action here where the way the resolution's written, it's, it's the Town Hall, the Town Meeting, the will of Town Meeting, and Town Meeting would be speaking to us. So I think, well, it's important to, if they want to discuss that, and we should, we should hear from them. I'm not so sure we should be weighing in on that resolution now, but we shouldn't stand in the way of it going before Town Meeting either. And I don't procedurally, I mean, that's a question I had for Attorney Heim earlier. I don't know whether there's a way to do that without taking a favorable action or a no-action vote. Just procedurally, how that would work at Town Meeting, so perhaps a question for him on that.
Attorney Heim.
So to my understanding, the question is, if the board doesn't want to take a position on the warrant article, just for the public's information, the board generally recommends favorable action, which means that there's a motion. There's a specific thing that the board is saying should be done. For example, there would be a resolution, and the resolution's language would be proposed or endorsed by the board saying, "This is what we're asking Town Meeting to do." And then the alternative is that the board could say, "We're asking Town Meeting to take no action" on the warrant article itself. Neither one of those things necessarily means that the board can't provide comment that offers context. So if the board wants, it can certainly move favorable action insofar as moving favorable action for the purposes of discussion at Town Meeting without advancing a specific resolution, although it's a little bit awkward for the moderator because there would essentially need to be some motion presented by somebody with the actual language. Similarly, the board can take no action or can recommend no action and put in its comment that it is recommending no action because it doesn't have a specific resolution that it's supporting, but would welcome dialogue at Town Meeting should a substitute motion be submitted. The only other option is to essentially say that you'll report at Town Meeting and try to give some more time to cultivate the dialogue that Mr. Corsey is discussing. But procedurally speaking, the board can basically take a vote of positive action that doesn't include a specific resolution, which is a little awkward, but I suppose can be done. It can take a vote of no action and say that, you know, while the board is not supporting a specific resolution, it doesn't want to stand in the way of Town Meeting having a discussion about this. Or it can basically say that it would like to report to Town Meeting at Town Meeting because it hasn't formulated a specific position at this time. I don't know. I hope that's helpful, Mr. DeCorcy. I know it's I don't know. I hope that's helpful, Mr. DeCoursey. I know it's, it was a lot to digest.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. Uh, yeah, Attorney Heim, I, 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 I think that is helpful and, and I, I, I don't wanna bring the specific motion until. We all speak about this, but I mean, we have taken actions, um. You know, we took our last action in, in September on this issue. Um, so I, I. I'd like to perhaps, uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman, hear, hear from the other members and maybe, um. You know, have, have a little bit further discussion before I, I, I would bring a particular motion or anybody else would.
All right, Mr. Diggins.
Sure, well, you know, it's, it's out of respect for me for, uh, Mrs. Corsi. Uh, and anyone who wants to spend, take more time to think about something that. Uh, I won't push a motion right away, me to vote no action on this because I just feel that. Uh, given that it isn't something on which a town meeting can, I mean, it's, it's just. To start, to use the term from town meetings, out of scope, I mean, for what town meeting has any influence on you. And so. I think it's misleading, you know, to tell town meeting that you can do something that's out of your power. Uh, and I say that as a town meeting member, uh, and, and so, uh, that's my take on that. The nice thing about. Our form of government is that we can say no action. The moderator can put it on the consent agenda and someone can take it off and town meeting can have at it. You know, and I would look forward to that discussion because, uh, what I will say is that, uh, it would be a very interesting discussion. Uh, I would hope that the town moderator would allow as many people as wanted to speak on it. Because when I've listened in on conversations about this, being, uh, the, the yeses from some people are very nuanced, you know, and I can. Appreciate how hard it is for anyone to say no, uh, on this. I get that, you know, and, 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 um, uh, uh, because we, your record is, your vote is binary. Me, and, and as nuanced as your statement may be, me, in the end, it's gonna be assessed, be in one direction or another. A lot of people just won't wanna be, be recorded on, on what they consider me the wrong side. You know, of the answer. I get that too, but still, I think it'd be an interesting discussion, uh, uh, and, uh. I'm sticking with my position though about banners in on town hall because, uh, I think it's. We have to think about this in a general way. Uh, and what's important to me in all cases is to, you know, protect the minority. And you know, cause you never know when you're gonna be in the minority, you know, and, and there is the, the phrase of the tyranny of the majority. And, and you know, if, just for a highly divisive issue. Uh, we wouldn't, I think, be talking about putting a banner on town hall. I mean, it's because we know that. The vast majority of the community is in favor of this, be that it even has me the, the, the. The thought of going on town hall. Yes, there may be some incidents being of, of sign, um. Defacement and maybe even some more, um, intense issues. I don't wanna diminish me what's happened, but. We, we all know that the, the vast majority of people in this town, me, or, or very supportive of. Black people and, and black lives, and, and so to the extent that most people are. Me, then the sign is reinforcement and it does make people feel good, eh, but. This is one sign. We don't know what the next situation will be. We, and what sign someone wanna have up, be it, and, and, and so government not only be. Supports, be, takes, acts on the will of majority, but responsible government also protects the minority. And, and so that's why I feel that, eh, we shouldn't have the sign there. And I could do, say some personal things about. Eh, uh, my mom, be then, and maybe I will, you know, and, and her take on, on, on gay, uh, folks. Me, she was very religious, eh, and she loved me intensely, but you know, she felt that. Eh, uh, my soul was lost, me, because of my orientation, eh, and, and for her. It, um, be, it was a very religious thing, me, of, uh, the gay pride thing, you know, it, it's just. For, it violated her sense of, of, of religion, eh, and so. As proud as I would feel about a gay pride flag on town hall, I know what that would do to her. Eh, uh, and, and for me, it wasn't so important that I would have a banner. Be on town hall where that banner of her represented me, uh, uh, government institution that was going in. In the wrong direction, eh, uh, and, and you can say she's wrong, uh, feeling that way, yeah. Uh, but you know, it's the way she feels, me, and people's ability to feel and people's ability to change. Being, it's not something that they, they have that much control over. I mean, it's really pretty much how we're wired up. Me, and those of us who are more progressive may feel that, you know, we, we are great people because we're progressive, but you know. We, we're, we're pretty much wired up that way. And there are other people who are wired up different ways, you know, and. And me, our genetics define our possibilities, me, but our environment, me, defines me the capabilities. Eh, and I would like to see us create environments that can allow people to express more that rage. And what I'm getting at here is that some.
And you just muted yourself.
Yeah, sorry, but sometimes it's better to move slowly, be, uh, step by step, me, than to try to take really big steps and cause me. A lot of, um, backlash, be that has its own consequences that set, set you back, me. And, and, and yes, people will want to battle through that, but I think it's sometimes better to move. A little more slowly and bring everyone along. It takes a little, it takes a little longer, it's more effort, be, but I think it's a, a better process. And, and so, um. Let's take it, let's, yeah, I'll, I want, I so much want to say no action on this, but as I said at the beginning. Eh, I'm gonna respect Mr. Corsi's desire to, um, maybe deliver some more and, and sit back and listen to the rest of my colleagues. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Curro.
Thank you. Um, I, I respect what my colleagues have said. I, I, I've got some problems with it though, um, with both. Both approaches, um. One way or another, this is coming before town meeting, okay? So I, I think we can all agree, agree on that. There, there's enough passion behind it that one way or another, there will be, um. You know, this resolution will come, uh, before town meeting using the, the, the vehicle, this warrant article. If we vote no action tonight, all we're doing is we're putting a procedural. Uh, impediment in, in front of the proponents, so they'll have to go and they'll have to do all of the jump to hoops to, to file. Substitute motions and, uh, we, we, we know that substitute motions and that whole, that whole process. Often is a source of confusion at, at, at town meeting. And I think under the conditions that we're gonna be having this town meeting under. Um, could be, um, e- even more so. And as far as, you know, a, um. A motion to report at town meeting or, or any action we take to, to defer. Uh, a, a decision i- is going to impede anybody's ability to, um, file a substitute. Motion or, or an amendment because the deadlines are coming up quickly. I mean, my feeling is. That. We should pass through the resolution as it is, but with a very strong comment, um, that reflects this, this board discussion. Reflects the, the issues of, uh, the, the separation of powers, the inability of town meeting to, to do this, reflects some of the, some of the, um. The concerns that have been raised by, by, uh, M- Mr. Diggins and, and, and others. And let it go to town meeting for, for the, um, discussion. To my, to my mind, it's equivalent to what we do when we second a motion for discussion. When we second a motion for discussion, we don't necessarily a- ag- agree with the, the wording as it's been put forward, but. We agree that it should go through with discussion, so. My, my feeling is that, um. We should pass through, and I know it goes through as favorable action, we should pass through the, the resolution as it, as the two hundred nine. Individuals have, have signed it with a comment that, that is very clear. I think the comment becomes particularly important in the, in this case. Um, in the board's report to, uh, to town meeting. Um, we've already heard, there are some time, we had one town meeting member come on. Who has. You know, a counter argument for, um, for the town, town meeting, but some other. Points of view on this, um, Mr. Diggins presented certain points of view. Let it go there, let the discussion happen, but I just, I fear that we're, we're just, um, creating a, a procedural mess if we either. Put through no action or if we defer action on this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanna give a point of clarification and, and my, my discussion about potentially. Reporting was really based on my belief that our report has to go out this week and we're meeting next Monday. So I, I, I agree with Mr. Care. I, I'm not proposing that we don't do anything until we show up at town meeting. I'm, I'm thinking it would be the next meeting. Of the select board, just for the very reasons Mr. Care said, out of, out of fairness, because I, I would not wanna do something on the first night of town meeting, particularly. Uh, where the meeting is, is, is done through Zoom, um, but, but I, I do also recognize that we're not gonna get a comment done. And put enough in the air this week. And, and so that, that's really where it's coming from. I should have been clear on that, so it, it. It, it wasn't designed to, to, to wait until the night of town meeting.
Ms. Mahan?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll try to be as brief as possible, um, this. We, the five of us and two by osmosis, the town manager and town council. Have had this conversation with the same ten or so people at various points, getting it onto our select board agenda, citizens' open forum. After we take a vote, um, my first comment would be, I, I, I'm all about process, not that other people aren't. And, and respecting the process. Um, I'm on the fence about whether to support or vote no action on. And I wanna make it clear to the people who have spoken and maybe haven't spoken, but have been listening, this is just a resolution to go to town meeting. That if the majority of town meeting passed it, the board, select board and town manager has already taken a vote and it's come down. Um, and to me, I see it as a battle, a turf war amongst some few people. That have turned this banner into, um, Arlington proving it's, it's doing steps against racism. Um, you know, at, at some point, you know. I learned this when I first got on the board. When the board takes a vote, many times I was in the minority. And what I could do is maybe try to procedurally keep trying to bring things in and find ten more of my friends to come in and, and say, do this. But I was doing that because I didn't get my way that way. What I've learned is. We're all saying our, our mission is to confront systemic institutional, um, in a, uh, individual racism. As well as the other needs of, of the town, as Mr. Caro, uh, pointed out. Um, and it shouldn't be around a banner. And to me, it's disrespectful to town meeting to send a warrant article to them to say. Even though you have no power, we want you to join with us to band against the select board and town manager. Um, for their action that they took. So that's why I'm, you know, I'd like to hear no action, but I don't know where my colleagues are gonna go. This, the second part that's really irritating to me, and the town has some ownership on this. My understanding is when the banner went up, when the manager called me, I said. I was on the fence. I said, it's gonna be a week and he said, no, um, the Human Rights Commission. And, uh, wants to put it up in concert with June nineteenth, with, uh, Pride Month. And then at the July meeting, the Human Rights Commission would come back with a recommendation to move it to another town property. And then when July came and August, July came, they still hadn't, um. Gotten back to the board, the hu- the Human Rights Commission, what other town property to, uh, put the, hang the banner on. Um, and so then it got moved, okay, we'll keep it up until August. And then, um. Still nothing back from the Human Rights Commission where to send this banner. And then again, this group of dozen people said. Oh, you, you're taking this down before the Padrini, um, hearing, um, that's a terrible message. And to, to me, it's been a small group that has tried to find, you know, like, you know, my grandmother would say, manana, manana, manana. Um, and so we agreed to, um. Uh, take it down by September thirtieth. And again, it was my understanding, and I'm, I'm not saying this. Directed to, to Mr. Chaplain, except for, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the original intent was that the Human Rights Commission. Was going to come back along with the Division, uh, Diversity Equity Inclusion, Ms. Harvey. Uh, come back, uh, with the recommendation of where to ha- hang this banner on town property. Is my memory close to correct? Or did I somehow have a dream?
Mr. Chaplain?
I'd only, uh, slightly correct that the, the Human Rights Commission. Never said they would do it, but wanted another group to be formed to do it. So I think you're, you're, you're right in the concept of. A group outside of this board needing to, to talk about these matters, um, but the hu- the Human Rights Commission, at least in their leadership. Never said that they would be the ones to take this, take this question on.
Okay, so then I guess what I would say is, um, again, being respectful of town meeting, we're at a Zoom meeting. Um, which the purpose of this meeting was sort of a goodwill understanding of. Mostly the citizen warrant articles that we didn't h- hold off, have hearings on in the summer. Um, that that would be at this special town meeting in the fall, uh, in that. However was represented, my understanding is somehow from the Human Rights Commission, whether it's they were supposed to form another committee. To look at where this banner should go, with, with all due respect. I don't know why that has to happen. I mean, I can give you some suggestions, what are the town properties and. As a matter of fact, I have a memory, but I don't wanna go back and forth with the manager because it's not his back and forth to have. But I do remember hearing one or two places that it could go as a town property, which isn't very far from town hall. Um, so. I'm leaning towards no action, but with the comment saying that, um, uh. That this banner originally, there was going to be a po- report back. From, I guess, a separate committee. I didn't think that. I thought it was human rights, that the Human Rights Commission, um, is going to form. And come back and report to the board and also town meeting if they want. And we can, you know, put it on the town meeting mailing list. Of that step, when we initially put it up in July. And it was only, I thought, a week, but then a month, my understanding, it was represented the board that, I mean, June, we put it up. Come July meeting, there's gonna be recommendation of where it should go. And I don't wanna say the place because, but I know, I, I can remember one of the places that was cited to me. Um, you know, here we are in October from this that started in June. Um, I'd rather have, uh, no action with the report that, uh, as represented to the select board. Uh, back in June, um, that the Human Rights Commission, um, was going to. Uh, by whatever means they deemed appropriate, wh- whether through the Human Rights Commission or a separate. Other commission or subcommittee, uh, and come back with what they said we would have in July and here we are in October. Um, cause, you know, and my only other thing is, and it's not for Attorney Heim to say, so I don't want you to answer, but. You know, I don't know that, um, the moderator. Unless he already said he would, would necessarily allow this, um, for discussion because it's basically. The intent is to put the Black Lives Matter banner back up on town hall until town meeting recommends its removal. Well, that, they're not the shareholder that makes that decision. That's beyond their scope. Of what their duties are, you know, legally and according to town meeting times, that falls to the select board and the town manager. So that's, um, a, a whole nother, you know, that's for, and, and I'm not an attorney, so. But that's for Attorney Leoni, you know, my only thing is, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic. It's, huh, by and large, all of us same white people having this discussion when, you know. What was represented to me as a member of the board back in June when this went up and they said, we were told. The Human Rights Commission, however they get it done, will have a recommendation in July of where this should go so that we're not taking it down. We're taking it and putting it on another town property. That didn't happen. So I'd rather have a no action. Uh, wording to that effect that, you know, and we anticipate, um, you know. Within, uh, an appropriate amount of time, um, that we will get the. an appropriate amount of time, um, that we will get this recommendation down. I think what people are hanging and I understand them saying that you took it down. So you're taking down the ideal and taking down the thought. Originally, the way it was presented to the board, it was never to be taken down. It was to be hung at Town Hall for a month. And then in July, we would say, uh, this is what the Human Rights Commission says. Other town property, it should go, um, the next month. So Adam, did I, did I misrepresent? Did I go too far down the road or is there anything you want to add to that? Is that? Can we go back to that plan?
So I, I, I mean, I think that could be an outcome of the board's vote, right? The board could vote to establish a body to study where a Black Lives Matter banner or similar banner could or should be uh, be, be, what am I trying to say exhibited in Arlington for, and for what duration or what during what periods of time? That could be, that could be an outcome.
But I'd like, yeah, but I'd like to keep it with the original where the majority of these people who have been bringing this issue up over and over again. I don't feel, speaking for myself, I don't feel that they would feel I'm the person who should be assembling that committee. I, I feel what I'm saying is everything you just said, but back to the original plan, the Human Rights Commission, whatever way they get it done, whether it's amongst the commission or subcommittee they set, that they, um, report that back to us. Like if you say the select board, I can hear some people, not everybody, but some people perhaps, um, not accepting that as a, as a valid stakeholder.
So, and
could I?
Chaplain.
I did want to add, and Diane, you mentioned this as well. Um, I, I, because I think this could help the board's thoughts about an approach that um, several board members have talked about town meeting being able to debate this and hearing nuanced thoughts. Since this is a resolution, my assumption is that the moderator will take one pro speaker and one con speaker as he has in all of my time here on resolutions. So I, 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 I wouldn't want any board member or member of the public to falsely assume there will be a long detailed debate about this at town meeting because though I don't, I've not specifically spoken to the moderator about this, it would be a deviation from his prior practice to allow more than one speaker on each side of this at town meeting because it's a resolution.
Okay. Thank you. I honest to goodness forgot about that, but, um, I guess I would leave it to, I'm, I'm hearing from, I heard Len saying maybe no action, but he wants to hear from the rest of the board. And I'm sorry, Mr. Diggins, I'm hearing from Mr. De Corsi. Uh, perhaps we'll report someone from the select board or two members meeting with this group. And then I heard from Mr. Carol saying, let's send it down there, um, for a debate. I'd be happy to whoever's saying they're actually, I'd, I'd support no action. I'd support, we'll report, I'd support favorable action, but I, my druthers would be no action. However, the board is, um, waiting to hear from the Human Rights Commission. Basically what we were sold the first time around when this went up, you know, I agree, it never should have come down. It should have been the original plan. Town Hall went somewhere else. Okay. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Chaplain. So, so just first off, Attorney Heim lost his camera. It died on him. So he is with us. So if anyone needs to ask any questions of Attorney Heim, he is there. So this is, if you kind of peel the onion and look at what we're actually voting on here. We're voting on a resolution to, so say we vote favorable action, we're voting for town meeting to vote to tell us to do something that we could do right now. So procedurally, it kind of puts my head in circles, but I think I confuse what everyone's, we're all trying to say the same thing in different ways is that we think town meeting should take a vote on it. We know that they will have a vote on it regardless of what we've put out. And I think what Mr. Carol is saying is that why make them go through that process? So, you know, I think and I'm interested to hear what my colleagues say that if we take a vote of favorable action with a strong comment and then in, um, not the town meeting connoisseur of the group, but I think I in a vote of favorable action would then go up and present the article and would have limited comments based on the comments of the board and can just tell, would tell town meeting that, you know, we do it, we voted favorable action just for the matter of putting this before the body. And the board realistically didn't, isn't trying to weigh in on any of the decisions of town meeting. And then they'd have the more thorough comments that go along with our vote. And then you know, I, I don't know how, what the timeframe is on this committee, but going along with what Steve or Mr. Corsi had mentioned is if we can designate two board members to speak with, you know, interesting parties in the next few days and we could come back with a recommendation for our meeting for our final, to include in our com- final comments as to what the future plan is. You know, I know it's been sitting out there and we, we have that, I think is really where we dropped the ball here is that we were supposed to have a plan in place for the banner at the time we, we voted to take it down and we didn't. And then it looks like we were voting it down just to tuck it away in a closet. And that was never the intention. It was always to have the banner displayed somewhere. We, we didn't do it. If we could get it by Monday to include our comments, to tell me to know what our intention is, it could sway the way they vote on the article in the actions related there to language that were, that was included in the, the language of the article. But, you know, I think either way, wha- whatever action we take, we're trying to put this before town meeting with a strong, with a clear message that we are not putting our finger on the scale in any way, shape or form. Because procedurally, they're essentially telling, we're not going to go to them and say, as Mr. Man said, vote with us on this to tell us to do something that we could already do. So with that, I'll turn it back to the board. Um, Mr. Carol.
Thanks a lot.
Well, I, I, I saw your eyebrow, so I, I didn't know if I said something incorrectly.
Yeah, then, no, I'm just, I'm just, um, thinking, I'm, I'm trying to assimilate everything that, that's.
If I second your motion for favorable action, with, uh, with the language, um, that we can draw up with town council, what I'd like to see in that language is that that the board expects to report uh, by November, what do we mean, November 16th, whatever? What that July recommendation that never showed up? We'll have that so that the chair can announce it, um, when we discuss this resolution. And if any of my two colleagues want to do this, I'm afraid if we do that, it's going to give very few people some ammunition to sidetrack it. I think if we just go with the original proposal, which is um, the Human Rights Commission, through whatever way they see fit, get a recommendation back to the select board. Um, I don't see why it couldn't be done by November 16th. It's basically sitting down and, oh, Mr. Carol.
So if I'm understanding what you're, what, what through you, Mr. Chair, if I'm understanding what you're proposing is that we, we take a vote of, of of, um, favorable action to pass through the resolution. But then we include in the comment, our proposal of, of how we will handle it according to, to that original plan so that town meeting understands what the option is. I mean, that even if they you know, they can vote for the resolution they want, but if they vote against the resolution, this is, this is the intention of, of the board. There, so in, in some ways they've, they have a choice then that, that's set up.
Attorney Heim, did you have something to add?
I don't want to speak out of turn.
No, you can go ahead.
The manager would also like to say something.
Yeah. Mr. Chaplain?
I, I just wanted to make sure the board was clear that the Human Rights Commission did vote favorably on this resolution. So I, I don't want to, I, I don't, I want to just make clear to not lead the board down uh, a surprise path that the Human Rights Commission has already voted to put it back on Town Hall. So voting to ask the Human Rights Commission to weigh in on it would likely just result in that same answer coming back.
Miss, may I? Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, uh, first of all, for just sort of public information, I want folks to understand the conversation that's happening between board members. Town meeting does not have the ability to direct the select board on what to do on something within their jurisdiction. This matter is, uh, well within the select board's power and jurisdiction. It's not within town meeting. Town meeting can make a resolution about just about anything it wants. It can resolve and has resolved to express an opinion on different matters before. I believe the article proponent understands that very well, uh, but I just want to make sure that members of the public understand. For the members of the board, in terms of what you're trying to encapsulate, if the board is inclined to take a positive action, there's nothing stopping the board from saying, you know, this is our motion in terms of what we would like to see happen. We would like to see further dialogue, uh, and, uh, a further exploration of ways in which we think that this could be appropriately um, be done. Because if the resolution passed as it's drafted, it's a resolution. It's not binding on the board. Uh, it can't actually make the board come back to town meeting for permission to take up the, uh, to take down the banner or decide when it's going to be, uh, flown and when it's not. That does leave the proponents with the option, any option leaves the proponents with the option to submit a substitute motion. So if the board wants to take positive action and it wants to say, this is our idea of how we are basically proposing to address this along the lines of what Ms. Mahan's been talking about, basically developing a, a, a process for revisiting this specific issue, the board can do so. And if the article proponent isn't satisfied with that or disagrees, they can submit a substitute motion, supporting the original resolution. But neither one of those actions will ultimately bind the select. I hope that that's.
Yep. So it, it's fallen upon my, the town manager said, you know, I think if we send this to Human Rights Commission, they're going to tell us to leave it on Town Hall, which is, you know, that's fine. That's their prerogative to make that decision. I, you know, I had discussions with town manager in July about forming a separate committee to come up with this with the future plan. It just wasn't appropriate at that time. And I still don't think it went over complicated by once we say that we're going to form a committee, we're going to get 35 emails from people that want to be on the committee. And, you know, I, I, I think what we can do is, like you said, because the open meeting law designate two members that in their discretion can meet in the next few days and talk to Julian Harvey and the town manager and the chairs of the Human Rights Commission and come up with a proposal for the board to vote on for what the, the future of the banner would look like. And I, you know, I think there's been discussions already about what that could be, where else it could be flown, where else it could, when is an appropriate time to raise it on a limited time basis to be put back up on Town Hall and then taken down again. And what we really need, really need in this situation is something concrete. That is, this is the plan. This is what we're going to, we can vote, discuss it, make changes when we're all meet again, you know, in an open forum. And then we'll vote at that time to say, this is the plan for this banner going forward. So we don't have these ongoing discussions like, oh, well, you know, this happened, let's put it up. And I, I envision as part of our discussion, we'll say that it's not, we're not going to put it up reactively to any events. It's going to be up in these specific instances. So hopefully we can get past the whole discussion of whether or not to put it up and when it's going to be up and where it's going to be elsewhere. And I think we can designate two board members to spearhead that and come up with a recommendation with, in consultation with other interested parties in town. And then at, by town meeting, when we report to town meeting, we can report that the board has, in the interim, since we've taken a vote of positive action with the caveats that we're just putting in front of town meeting for the purpose of their discussion vote, that this is the, the vote that the board has taken in order for the future of the banner. I'll take raised hand. Mr. Diggins?
Well, that's interesting. Normally I would jump at this. We, I just don't know if I have the bandwidth because of the, um, uh, effort going into virtual town meetings, a pretty tight timeline between now and the next, um, select board meeting. Uh, the other is that you are saying that you would want, you know, the discussion to be about it going on Town Hall. And I remain not in favor of that. If the discussion would be, it could go someplace else, be, I'd be happy to work with that. That said, I mean, I could be open. I mean, I'm always open to changing my mind. I just want to be realistic about the likelihood that I would change my mind about that. Now, I have no problems recommending something that I don't support as a, a, a point of of discussion because I am only one of five in, and, and should I be, uh, on the four one, um, side of a vote or the one in, on a four one, I would be fine with that. Uh, um, but, um, I'm kind of losing my train of thought. Uh.
Mr. Chair, is it, excuse me, Mr. Diggins, I might, might help clear that up. It's my understanding Mr. Carol has a vote, a favorable action that I've seconded.
Oh, you have?
I, my.
Yeah, I moved.
And I seconded. And it was, um, to low favorable action. Uh, to take whatever action before now in the first night of town meeting, which sounds like two of my colleagues. I ju- just want to put it out there that my memory of what I was told, which would be we, was that, um, in all probability, the Black Lives Matter banner would be hung on Robyn's library and/or some other town property. So I would just put that on the table in terms of, um, what, what it was. And I know I was told it was the Human Rights Commission would come back in July. They're probably going to recommend hanging it on the library and/or possibly then hanging it on some other town property. And I said, fine, whatever they decide. They've now chosen to say, put it back on Town Hall. That's a prerogative. So I just want to make sure Mr. Carol made a motion of favorable action, which I seconded. Um, and all this other work is going to get done in terms of two of my colleagues, not myself, um, taking the steps to say his, his, the action plan that we thought we were going to get in July, we're going to make it happen by November 16th.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Thanks. Thanks for that clarification. You know, through, um, through, through you, Mr. Chair, I have a, a question for, uh, the town manager. So, uh, you're the one that manages the, the, the signs of the, on the light poles? Whatnot, you know, so when people may come in, they say that like the, um, arts festival, like we will get a request from them to hang banners of the light poles, but that goes through you or does it always?
Answer that if you, if you don't mean that. That's the board vote.
The board approves it and DPW puts them up.
Yeah. Okay. So we're controlling, we're controlling those also. Interesting. Okay. Uh, then solid more reason for it to come to us. I guess my only problem with, with the favorable action is that it just kind of lets town meeting think that that is something that they can do. And yes, if we vote no action, be, they can still take it up. But it's not like us telling them, be, well, this is something that you, you, it's just really in your control. It isn't. And, and, and I guess already, even in my short tenure here, I'm, I'm encountering situations where where I see people doing something that I felt they really shouldn't do, but I was like, oh, I'm not going to say anything because I don't want to, you know, uh, tip the scales or put my thumb on it. And then they go down that road and it doesn't work and, and they didn't feel it wasted their time. I was like, I could have told you that. I didn't tell you that. And so I ca- I kind of feel that way in this situation. It's kind of like, just let's tell them this isn't something that you can control. It's not, it's not for you to determine. Go ahead, make your substitute motion. You're an adult. I mean, you can do your substitute thing. It'll be more work and more effort, but go ahead, you know, and do it. But it's not as if we told you be that, okay, it's okay to do this and we're going to put in, be our objections, be, and, and, and so now take that nuance and then take it to town meeting. And I don't know, it's a mess, but, uh, uh, that's how I feel about it, you know. that's how I feel about it, you know, but I'll listen to other people and, and we'll get to a decision here tonight. That's for sure.
I would interpret it as this, in a different way, not to overcomplicate this, but you know, we clearly, the intent of the article is that is it says to direct the, the Select Board to return the banner to Town to Town Hall. But it encompasses the language or take any action there too. And essentially, if we can come to Town Meeting and say, all right, this is the action that we're going to take regarding, regarding the banner, you know, they're, in a sense endorsing that action that we take. It's not on the head. It, it's a hard, it's, you know, from the start, it's been a hard article to take up just because procedurally, like I said, it makes my head spin. Because it just doesn't, it's not the way things will work. And it sets a dangerous precedent. But realistically, you know, I don't think people are going to gather a hundred signatures to contest every decision we make. This is one that had a lot of, got a lot of attention, had a lot of emotions behind it. So I think we're just trying to creatively put it in front of Town Meeting. I think we can cover what we need to, to say we are really not taking any, we're, we're not putting our finger on the scales of this article in any way, shape or form. We're just putting it out to Town Meeting for a vote. And this is what our plan is. So, you know, you can take, you can vote on a resolution before you, but we've already voted on what the permanent plan is for the banner.
I guess my question, am I recognized?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I guess my question is, is it inappropriate for us to put our fingers on the scale on this one? I mean, we, I mean, we kind of do that, I mean, with other articles. I mean, we say, well, this is what we think you should do. And, and so I'm not concerned about putting my fingers on the scale on this one, saying, like, this is out of scope. It, it's not, that's not for you to decide, you know, and then you're going to make a decision. It's still up to us to decide what to do. So, so we can make a decision. We, we, we know that people care about this. I care about it, you know, and, and, and we will work it out. It need not go before Town Meeting and, 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 but, but then you can take it before Town Meeting because that's what Town Meeting does. And, and I will stop because I see Mr. Care's hand raised and I'm just going to repeat myself. Thank you.
Mr. Dig, through the chair, Mr. Diggins, you're very passionate and I just want to be clear that every vote of this board does not have to be unanimous. So I, I, I mean, I guess I'm respectfully going to say that, that, that it's okay if there's a split vote of, of, of the board on, on this. We don't, every board, every vote doesn't have to be unanimous. So that, that, that's, that, that's, I guess where, where I would come down on this.
Sure.
So, yeah.
I have no further comments. Thank you.
All right. And Mrs. DeCoursey, any further comments?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think you captured in your statement, you did it twice, what, what I didn't do very artfully earlier. I mean, I, I think my concern was, was what Mr. Care's concern was just procedurally, and, and I think with the inappropriately appropriate motion where it's, if there is a vote of favorable actions for a very limited purpose, along with a detailed comment of, of what the plan is. And, and I think the, the town manager did present a recommendation to us in September and, and we took a different action. I think we could start with that recommendation, recommendation and, it, it may have to be reworked, but that when he introduced the discussion on September fourteenth, there was discussion about a committee coming back to the board. And I think that's where listening to, to what Mrs. Mahan said and what Mr. Care said, I think that's where we are. And, and my concern was having detailed enough comments, but I didn't want to, I, I wanted to put this before Town Man. I think it's appropriate, given the number of people, but I didn't want to move favorable action because we have taken our action. I think we explained what we're doing and what our plan is. I think, Mr. Chairman, you, you laid that out and, and I think that's where we are with the motions now. And I, I could support that.
Any further comment, Mr. Care?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. And just, just to clarify, Len, I just wanted to say that in, in my experience, when there is a split vote on the board in general, and I would, I don't want to speak for Town Council, but in general, the, the, the dissenting position is, is represented in the comment too, as to why there was a split vote. So just, just if that, if that plays into your, your thinking.
Attorney Hahn?
If I may, I, I, I think the board has had a very thorough discussion and I think I understand whatever the outcome of the vote is, whether it's positive or negative, I think I understand, I, I think I have a good amount of information to work with both for a vote and a comment.
All right, are we there?
Let's vote.
Attorney Hahn, we have a motion for favorable action from Mr. Care, second by Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
No.
Mr. Care?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
It's a four-one vote.
You all. All right. Just to final votes and comments.
Mr. Hurt, mayor?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Attorney Hahn. No, I'm also.
I just, I just wanted to note that some typos were caught by both members of the board and by the article's original proponent, Mr. Weinstein. I appreciate folks highlighting that there's a reason I'm not an accountant. This should read, I believe seventeen total members with fifteen voting members, and I will correct that. I also want to note that one eagle-eyed reviewer noted that I used the wrong complimentary. There's a complimentary with an E and a complimentary with an I, and I used the wrong one. So I've corrected both those things for the purposes of, of your, your report.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, civilian advisory board article.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just in, in week, there's, there's three articles here for final comment. I don't know if you're going to take separate votes. I had recused myself from Article Five. So to the extent that there's a final vote on that, I'm going to be recusing myself again. I don't know if there's discussion that I should be
All right.
video off or not, but.
So I was going to take them together, but I can split that one out. So if you want to, yeah, Attorney Hahn.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to be efficient. Mr. DeCoursey, you're, what you're voting on is what's been put in front of you, including your recusal.
Okay.
I, I don't think that you have to recuse yourself from a discussion of, I'm not voting on this, this article.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Article Five, any comments, questions, changes by show of hands? Article Six, any comments, questions, changes by show of hands? Article Ten, any comments, questions, changes by show of hands? All right.
Chair?
Yes.
Could I move favorable action, final votes and comments on Articles Five, Six and Ten?
Thank you. And Mr. DeCoursey?
Second.
Mr. Diggins, any additional comments?
Nope, thank you.
Mr. Care?
Nope, thank you.
Attorney Hahn?
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Care?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
All right. New business did sneak its way on the agenda this, this meeting. So new business, starting with Attorney Hahn?
I just, I, I, I'm sorry if you'll indulge me for a moment. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder. I just want to extend my compliments to our, our Clerk's Office and their staff, all of whom worked very, very hard on some of the, understanding the legal aspects of these past couple of election cycles. And I, I appreciate their attention to all the details that mattered to this particular election. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Chaplin?
I, I would certainly echo Town Council's comment about the great work of, of the Clerk's Office, the Select Board's Office, the Facilities Department, Health and Human Services, all the poll workers, the police officers, everybody who over the course of the past few weeks made this election effort come together safely and really without, without event. So my, my thanks as well. I know it was said earlier in the night, but I'd like to echo the thanks that Mr. Diggins and Mr. Leonie and others gave to the, the town staff and volunteers that are making virtual Town Meeting happen. It, it really is an incredible collaborative effort and people are putting a lot of time into it. And I'm sincerely appreciative of that effort. I'd also like to announce a few things. I don't want to take Town Council's thunder, but we have officially hired a replacement for attorney at Marlanga, our Workers' Compensation and Benefit Attorney. We've now shifted that role to a Deputy Town Council slash Workers' Compensation Benefit Attorney. And we're fortunate to be joined. When, when did he start? Just the end of last week, Doug, right?
No, sir. He starts November ninth. So I will.
So he's here filling out paperwork, but he hasn't even started yet. So.
Yeah, I'll try to introduce him to this board and, and tell you a little bit more about it.
Attorney Michael Cunningham, a lot of great direct experience in the field of workers' compensation and, and, and risk management. And I, I think it'd be a great compliment to the team and be a great assistance to, to Doug and, and the work that he does. I'd also like to announce that it's, I, I know for a fact this person started today. Jill Harvey's administrative assistant started today, Christina Coleman. And we're very excited to have her on the team as well to really help to amplify the work that Jill is doing, both internally and externally on, on these matters of diversity, equity and inclusion. And I think that underscores further that investment the town has been continuing to make in these issues. So very excited to have her on the team and to give the board an update that we're very close on making a decision for a new facilities director. And once we've made that decision and have a candidate who's accepted the position, we'll make sure that we let you know about who that is and when the start date will be as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan?
Okay. Thank, thank you, Thunder Steelers, in terms of thanking everyone who made the elections and our upcoming virtual Town Meetings happen. I know that I'm not going to, we've been here all night and probably haven't slept much the night before. I know each of us, including myself, had conversations with the town manager and our personnel director and our town council with respect to the various positions. The Deputy Town Council with all three and then Adam and Mr. Chaplain and Ms. Malloy on the Facilities Director. It seemed what I was looking for, for those people in the roles they would fill, it's sort of a add-on for the Deputy Town Council and, and pretty much the same facility. So I, I'm confident that that's the, the people that we hired. And then the only thing I want to say is I want to thank, truly thank the Girl Scouts troops from Hardy and Thompson and their parents. They invited me into one of their Girl Scouts meetings, Zoom meeting to talk about, to earn their government badge and talk about women in politics. I said, we need a lot more. We need a lot more women everywhere. But anyways, as well as, you know, this, what the Select Board is about, what Town Meeting is about. And afterwards, I got texts back saying, what a great job you did. And one of the moms who is wasn't a Town Meeting member is now seriously considering running next year for Town Meeting. I guess the other moms were. Because I explained it so well. It made it sound as exciting as it is and how it truly is one of, one of, if not the most important elected official offices you can hold in town. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
See if I can pull this off. Yeah. So, recognize that adorable couple, you all?
Saw that.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so apparently, you know, they got married, you know, it's all, so they're just so cute, you know, and, and they're done. Every time I think of him, I smile, you know, and so, so I'm so happy for him. I filed out through Marie, so I guess it should be upset that he didn't tell me, but that's okay. That's okay. And, and, and so three, three other short things, you know, maybe I'm stealing the, the chair's thunder, but he and I attended rededication of the memorial of Richard Buzel. And that was a really, that was a touching event. And I don't want to make it about me, but but what me, it, especially a rewarding time for me was that I like people, but I don't think of myself as a people person. And running for this position, I was like, am I really the right person for this? Because I'm, I tend to be cerebral, more into concepts and abstractions. And I went to it and I, I was happy I went to it because it was not only good to see the, the dedication of DPW and the great jobs they did, but it was really wonderful to meet the people that grew up with Richard Buzel and get to learn more about him. I mean, he was a, a guy, you know, who really wanted to go to the Naval Academy in, in Annapolis. He, he couldn't easily get in, but he went into service, I mean, and, and put in his time and, and through his determination, he, he got there. And so it was, yeah, it was good to do that. It was, and, and the third thing is I am now on the Executive Committee for the MBTA Advisory Board. And I bring that up because one of the big things now is that the MBTA is exploring some service cuts with respect to the budget shortfalls due to the COVID nineteen situation. And they are doing hearings. And so I certainly advise you to go to the MBTA's website and, and, and find out about those hearings, even if it, one is dedicated to a certain area of town. You can always go to it. It's all on Zoom, of course, meaning comment on the area. But if you care about transit, definitely chime in. And the last thing is we, of course, had the passing of Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And when listening to some, some stories about her, there was a quote that I saw her make on an interview. And she said, fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you. And that's how I really feel about these. I don't tend to use the word fight, but the whole point is that we, we feel strongly about things, but we can do it in a way that encourages people to support us in our struggle. And so those are great words to live by. And I'm happy to repeat them. And she was a great person. Thank you.
Mrs. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Care. No new business.
Mr. Care?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think my thunder was also kind of, kind of stolen. I was also going to congratulate Mr. Dunn on his, his marriage. That was great, great news to to, to, to hear. And I was also going to note the election workers. I think that, and just add a little bit of a extra note to it. I think that we see the West staff and the Select Board Office and the Clerk's staff and all the people come forward to, to work the polls, just how much honest, hard work they, they put into it. It was particularly heartening. This year, how many new poll workers came forward to make sure there was coverage for those traditional poll workers who, who may have been vulnerable in the face of, of COVID. And I want to thank them. And I'm probably going out on a limb here, but I, I just want to say, I think, how seeing that, that window of how hard our, our election workers work, how furious I am that the current chief executive of our country who purports to be the leader of the free world has disrespected their counterparts around the country and disrespected the voters by, by impugning the work that's being done right now to, to count and bring our, bring our country to, to a, a place of resolution. And I just had to get that off my, my chest. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think if any of the new poll workers are lineal descendants of yours, tradition to take them out for dinner, right? Just a couple of things. Just I want to reiterate, thanks to all such amazing jobs by everyone to get this done in really, you know, a crazy time in our country, in our town. The election went by, went through very smoothly and everyone involved. I did want to mention, we, if you drive up Park Ave these days up by the water tower, you'll see the Arlington Rotary Club has the flags for our heroes, which I believe they have an event on Sunday, one PM. But you, I went last year with, with my son and it was really a cool thing to, to walk through and, and see the names that you see out there. So if you're in the area and you want to have some outdoor fun, you can hit the water tower up on Park Ave. I do want to thank Jeff Chunglo, both for the event that we attended, that me and Mr. Diggins attended a few weeks ago with Mr. Chaplain at Buzel Field. But he, Jeff is one of those guys that never really ceases to amaze with all the work that he does for Arlington veterans. And next week is Veterans Day. And just like with Memorial Day, we next week is Veterans Day. And just like with Memorial Day, we can't celebrate how we traditionally do. But Jeff didn't want to let that pass without any fan fear. So I believe Mr. Chaplain and I are both meeting at separate times tomorrow with members from ACMI to take, to pre-tape statements for the Veteran Day celebration. So I, you know, I just want to make sure we spread the word so people do see, you know, reward the effort that just putting on for our veterans and go ahead out and and look for that on ACMI on Veterans Day. Um, then the other thing I just want to mention, so we did have, we we posted a meeting, a joint meeting with the Housing Authority. This is actually my fault. I was still in discussions with the chair of the Housing Authority as to whether or not next Monday worked. He had informed me that it didn't. So that's currently on for Monday, but we're we're going to have to reschedule that. I'll connect with the chair again. But I just want to give the all the applicants enough notice. Yes, Mr. Kuro?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't mean to cut you off on your point. Have you finished? I forgot one very important thing uh, to mention. Um, I had mentioned last meeting that I was a municipal rep to the superintendent search screening committee that to see, um, we did forward two, two finalists um, to the school committee. I understand they were accepted this evening. It's uh, Dr. uh, Victoria Greer, who is the superintendent of schools for the town of Stoughton and uh, Dr. Elizabeth um, Holman, um, who is the assistant superintendent in the city of Waltham. So I just wanted to 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 put that out there because I know the school committee will be initiating now a community process around that. It was my honor to uh, serve and screen.
Yep. Right. And then so so just to follow up, as I mentioned that about the Housing Authority, you'll see the agenda change, but right now, that's the, I believe, the only thing on the agenda, but I did speak with Attorney Hahn today. We'll we'll need that meeting for final votes and comments on the hearings for tonight. So we still have to, we still will have to meet on Monday, correct, Attorney Hahn? Yep.
That's correct on the votes and comments, yes.
Yep. So those will be added. Um, and I think that's it.
Mr. John?
Motion second. Second by Mr. Kuro, Attorney Hahn?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggs?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, folks.